So they can't.
I tried to.
Welcome everyone to the special City Council, Council Work Session for Saturday, October 10th, 2020. The meeting will be called to order at 10:07 due to technical difficulties. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda. Okay, no worries. First item on the agenda is ID 262-20, Discussions of Objectives of the Budget Work Session. So I will pass it over to our City Manager now, David Gerald. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay? Good. So thanks for, for joining us on this Saturday, for taking time out of your weekend to, to join us for this. Thanks to the Finance Committee for, for this idea and for helping to organize it and put together the agenda. Before I start talking about the objectives, I want to emphasize that the real purpose of this meeting is to hear the priorities of the, of the City Council. So we're going to start by making some preservation, some presentations to kind of lend context and background to, to, to the budget that we're going to be talking about. But, but the real focus is going to be on your priorities. So we're going to dig up the, the mission, vision, and strategic issues that were developed back in 2012, just again to, to lend some background and context. We're going to have a refresher on the basics of, of our general fund budget. Then Director Dickinson is going to do an update on the FY '20, '21, and '22 budgets, the, the estimates and projections for those. Then we'll move to your presentations. The Department Directors are here, as you all have seen, so they're available to join us. It'll be kind of like our Zoom meetings, right, where they just kind of pop in all of a sudden. You don't even realize that they're there. They're here. They're socially distanced throughout the building, and as we need them, we can call them to, to come and join in any of the discussions that we need them to participate in. We've added three focus areas that seem to be of special concern, and those are Police, the Office of Community Services, or Community Caring, or the many names that we've called it, but that, that Office of Community Services, and then the Planning and Zoning Budget. So after you present your priorities, then we'll, that we'll especially focus in on those three areas and what, what we think the budget may look like for those three areas for FY '22. Just by way of, of housekeeping, we plan to take a bit of a break around noon, about two hours in, so that we can take lunch and maybe get some fresh air and stretch a little bit, and then try to come back about 12:30. And we're scheduled to go till about 2 o'clock. So returning to the objectives, we, in discussions with the Finance Committee, have, have basically a couple of objectives. We're going to be looking at FY '22, and it's going to be a very challenging year, as you all know. And we've got some projections that show it's, it's going to be very challenging. There's going to be a significant deficit projected for next year. So we need the involvement of the entire council during the entire budget process. So we're going to kind of set the stage, and we actually did a resolution that, that changes the, the schedule for the budget for next year to reflect that goal of bringing the council in early and having discussions with the entire council through, through all next spring, and not just have the discussions with the Finance Committee. So the meeting objectives are, first, to provide a budget update, a budget status of where we are with the just finished FY '20 and '21, and then where we think '22 is going to be. And then to get your involvement and your priorities and your thoughts as we move into the budget preparation with the departments. That will start either in late November or December, that they'll be putting together their budgets, and your priorities will need to inform the decisions that are made during that process. So those are the two objectives that we have. If, if, if you have any thoughts about that or want to add anything, otherwise we'll just move on to the next agenda item.
Alderman Annett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the Finance Committee. We really appreciate having this session, having it early. It's actually responsive to something that is in the code, which is really a report, status report from the Finance Director. Can you hear me? I have two masks on. Can you hear me? All right. But we've taken it, the administration, and thank you, Mayor, and City Manager, Finance Director, and all the administrative staff. Thank you for taking this the extra mile. What occurred to us on the Finance Committee is that we put in a lot of work largely by ourselves, and then throw it to the council, and you have about two weeks to really dig in and think about it, and think about any value added that we give you from our report. And we don't think that's enough, and we think that it's also very hard on the staff. They have to answer same questions over and over. So what we're hoping that this retreat will spark is many more meetings of the council at the whole upfront, so that you all have a time to think about this and, and get your thoughts together and provide your input. You are elected as stewards of the city, and we need to make it possible for you to do that job. So again, I will say for myself, and I believe for the Finance Committee, and probably from all of us, thank you for doing this. I think it's an important step, and I think it's an important improvement going forward. So I look forward to the morning, and I'm sure we're going to have fun.
Okay, I'll read it. So the next agenda item is ID 263-20, Review of the City's Mission, Vision, and Guiding Principles. So Julian, if you could put up the, the first presentation. So back in 2012, when Mike Malinoff was the City Manager, and a few of you were, were on the council, the city hired the University of Maryland and some of their organizational specialists to help us put together the mission, vision, and guiding principles. That was, I'm not sure that that was ever even officially passed by the council, but there was a lot of work by the departments and some by the council as well to put that together.
It was presented to us, but never brought forward to be approved.
So here we go. It's coming up now. So I'll just quickly review this, just again to lend some context and background to, to the budget. So the mission statement, and some of you have probably never even seen that. Next slide, please. Thank you. "The City of Annapolis delivers comprehensive, high-quality services to a diverse population of residents, businesses, and visitors. Through a broadly representative, accessible, and accountable city government, recognized for professionalism, stewardship of resources, and efficiency." I think that's, that's probably a, a pretty good mission statement. It probably hasn't changed a lot. Maybe we would change some of the wording a little bit, but that really captures that, that we provide services to our community, and that we want to do it in a, in an efficient and professional way, and, and, and take care of the resources that they trust us with. So next slide, please. So the next slide is the vision statement. So this is what we endeavor to be. Annapolis is, is Maryland's dynamic, culturally diverse capital city, renowned for its history and maritime amenities, and as a safe, healthy, sustainable place to live, work, and, and visit. Again, probably not too bad. I think that captures a lot of what we want our city to be. And again, at some point, we might, may want to delve into this and spend time with, with updating this to, to wordsmith it somewhat, but I think these, those are pretty, that's a pretty noteworthy vision statement. So next slide is the strategic issues. And, and these surprisingly have not changed a lot since 2012 and the last eight years. So the need to match service delivery to resource constraints, so this goes to, to the budget issues and, and the fact that, that we're always short on resources to deliver the services that are desired. The need to diversify input to the City Council. I remember a lot of discussion about this, that we felt like there wasn't enough diversity in the, in the folks that were providing input to the city. And so we wanted to reach out to, to the many communities in the city to, to get their input as well. And the need to promote housing and employment opportunities for lower middle-income levels. So if you could go the next slide, these are kind of a breakdown of each of, of those three strategic issues. So match service delivery, optimize the operating capital, in other words, optimize the budget, give funding priority to core services. So there was a lot of discussion of identification of the core services and that those would receive the funding. And then increase efficiency in operations processes and services. And then there's sub-action items under each of those that I won't read through. Please go to the next one. Diversify input to the City Council. This is the one I mentioned briefly, but improve council, City Council meetings to facilitate, encourage residential input from different perspectives. Offer additional forums for residents to provide input to the council, and improve and expand City Council communications and interactions with residents. So this was all about getting more feedback from all parts of the community. And then the last slide, please. So this is about the, the housing and employment opportunities. And, and, you know, even eight years ago, this clearly, the, the housing opportunities was an issue then and continues to be an issue today. But Goal One was promote workforce development, increase job opportunities, and Goal Three, improve housing opportunities for residents of public housing in lower middle-income levels. So again, as, as you look through these, there may be some additional strategic goals that we want to add, but, but these three are probably still valid concerns and valid goals to, to accomplish in the city. So with that, I'll just open it up for any discussion, especially those folks that were here back then, if anything that you recall from these discussions. And then we can move on if, if there's no additional comments.
Alderman Finlayson.
Yes, thank you. What's striking to me, David, and I was here, and I remember being in this very room with community members as we worked through the mission, vision, and labored over all those adjectives that were, were going to be included. But what is most striking to me is the fact that they haven't changed. You know, the objectives that I think most of us will talk about later today, or the goals, rather, are the very same ones that were outlined in that issue statement. So we haven't moved too far off the mark. And whether we evaluate our efforts so far, I mean, I think that's what we should be doing. What have we accomplished in the last 10 years, and what still needs to be accomplished, and how do they, that change? How does that change? So that's my comment.
Alderman Annett.
I, I think Alderwoman Finlayson said it exactly right, unfortunately, from my view. We haven't moved too far off the mark. I, I really do think we should get a copy of this strategic plan to all of the new members of the council, because the plan went on to actually have a work plan on how to actually implement each of these strategic goals. And it is striking, and I lament that Alderman Dewan isn't here, but Strategic Goal Three is so much down his alley and so much along the lines of things that he and our former colleague, Mark Rodriguez, and our current colleague, Alderman Savage, have been pushing for us. Alderwoman Finlayson and I have been pushing on and off for 12, 13 years now. But we haven't necessarily moved the ball much further. I, I do think we have good administration, good staff, and I think that something like this strategic document could help us as the collective policymakers for the city focus our efforts. And I noted when I went through, and before I actually got to looking at the budget part of this, my goals for my ward, I think they're very similar to the things that are in the strategic plan, and probably we'll hear very similar for, for the goals that each of you have for your ward. So I, I think this is a good idea to remind us of this strategic plan and follow it, amend it if we think we need to, but I think it's a pretty good document.
Alderman Tierney.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having this today, and I'll be very quick. To sort of piggyback on what my colleagues said, any plan needs implementation. And so when this was done, was there any plan on who would be the gatekeeper of implementation of it? Who would revisit it and see if we were on, on task? I don't want to give anyone more work to do.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, that's the City Manager responsibility. Yeah, because it really, yeah, it's, it's definitely the same manager, because it's a, a view of the whole city and, and what the, what the priorities need to be and where the focus needs to be put.
But to follow up on that, if I may, Mr. Mayor, this happened at the end of an administration. Almost immediately, we had a new administration. We had changes in personnel at the administration, changes on the council, and I think Alderwoman Tierney, you're exactly right. There needs, if we make a plan, there needs to be some mechanism that makes sure that we continue to implement the plan. And this document, you know, there's some things that I might quibble with, but it's a pretty good document. And, and really, I think without necessarily following it a lot, successive administrations have followed it. It's just, I'm not sure we as a council have paid attention to it. So, but I think that's a very good point. You can have all the plans in the world. If you don't work your plan, you haven't done anything.
Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think putting their plan, I think is good, but really, I think it's most useful, because it really is up to the administration and the council at the time. So next election, I think they may be able to create a new, a brand-new plan. It's, it's a little late for us to do it now, but I think we should certainly keep that in mind for those of us who might be coming back.
Alderman Finlayson.
Yes. I'd just like to add that there were representatives from staff in the creation of the mission and vision and objectives. So staff was aware. Now, whether we gave them the actual charge to do something, I don't recall, and I doubt it. But they were aware, and, and I believe that some of them who are still with us may recall trying to implement some of these things that... David, were you here?
I was here, and I remember it well, putting this together, because the departments, especially the directors, put a lot of effort towards this, because there was a lot of background work with the University of Maryland by, by the departments before it moved on to the council for, for this discussion. So, yeah, I remember that well.
So I don't want us to assume that staff was not engaged in this, because they were. As, as you all were talking, I was thinking that maybe we could, as elected representatives, take a piece and shepherd it. You know, in some municipalities, the elected leaders have a focus. Like, there's one elected leader who knows finance. And so anything dealing with finance, because that's their professional background, that's what they focus on. You know, there are others that are someone who's knowledgeable and a professional in the environment, environmental issues. And so that's... And so that Alderman is known as the environmental person. So maybe we should think about charging ourselves with one of these goals and measuring how far we get with the success or reaching the success of the goals. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is ID 26420, review of the basics of the city's annual budget. So a lot of this information that you're going to see on this presentation is going to harken you back to last spring when we talked about some of these same issues to give background on the budget. Just some of the real basics for how the general fund budget comes together. So next slide, please. So some information on revenue. As you, I think you all know, about 69% of our general fund revenues are from property Property taxes are generally more stable than sales and income taxes. We do property assessments every, not we do, the county actually does the assessments every three years, and this is assessment year that we're going through right now. So the FY '22 budget will include new assessments. So whereas as we were going into FY '21, we knew exactly what, how much the property tax revenue was going to increase under the constant rate formula. We don't know that right now for FY '22. It seems that residential property values are staying up. In fact, it's kind of hot commodities right now. They're selling very quickly. So we're somewhat positive about real estate values, commercial real estate values, but the commercial side is very unknown with the loss of businesses and the loss of income for businesses. One thing that at least I didn't think about as we were going into the budget years is as interest rates have been decreased to try and stimulate the economy, we're losing revenue because we have a pretty sizable fund reserve that's invested. It's invested in the very safe instruments. But you know, we realize income from interest from that, that fund reserve money and it's diminished returns this year because of low interest rates. And as you know, tourism is not happening. People aren't coming to naval academy, they're not coming to the football games, they're not coming to visit their kids, and so tourism is really down. So next slide, please. Talk a little bit about the expenditure side of things. Similar to the number for property taxes, a percentage of revenues, salaries and benefits are about 68% of our total general fund budget. So when we're looking at doing reductions, if you don't, if you don't address that 68%, it's pretty slim pickings for reducing the rest of the budget. The growth in salaries and benefits, 3.79 in FY '19 to '20 and 9.79 into the current year. And we talked a lot about that last spring, so you're all very familiar with that. In July of '21, so coming up next July, there's another 3% COLA that's in the agreements with the AFSCME and fire employees and 2% for police. And then step increases are scheduled as planned. Pension costs are increasing. Again, we talked about this in the spring, but fire and police pension required contribution increased from 22% to 28% from '20 to '21 and expected to go up to about 33% in FY '22. And then the rest of our employees are in the state pension system and the contributions are going to increase from 9.4% to 10.2%. So all of the other general fund expenditures, so for parts and materials and you know, all the other things that we buy that aren't related to salaries are relatively stable and healthcare costs are also stable. So let's move on to the next slide. So this shows you a, in detail, the sources of revenue for the city, for general fund. So you'll see that big number for real property and a total of about $79 million. So these numbers include the $3 million of decreased, the estimate that we're going, decreased by $3 million of revenue this current fiscal year. These numbers reflect that. So next slide, please. So this shows the, I'm having a hard time seeing that, making sure we're on the same slide. The departmental expenditures. So our big two departments on the general fund side are police and fire, 25% and 24%. So about half of the general fund budget is in those two departments. Public works is big, but not as big on the general fund side because they have a lot of enterprise fund employees so that they end up being about 20% of the total budget as well. Next slide, please. This shows the breakdown by the types of expenditures. So again, that shows the big number for salaries and benefits. Contract services is also labor type or personnel type services. So those two together constitute a large piece of the general fund expenditures. Next slide, please. So this talks about our fund balances. And I may turn this over to Director Dickinson at this point for these next couple of slides. Fund balances and alignment with fund balance.
No, I got it right here.
You got it. Okay.
I hope everybody can hear me through the mask. All right. Starting with this page seven, we are fortunate enough to be through FY '20 and I have the most updated projections for '20. I want to warn you that these have not been audited. The auditors have not come out to conduct their fieldwork procedures. If they find something else, this could change these amounts. But right now, at the end of '20, as you can see, it looks, we're going to have $28.2 million of total general fund balance. What I showed, that's about $5 million higher than what I projected when we were doing the budget process in the spring. About half of that, some extra revenues that came in, and half of it's savings on the expenditure side. And some of those expenditure savings came that last three months of the year when the buildings were shut down and we weren't incurring all the operating costs because of the shutdown. And so that's good news for '20. It gave us, it'll give us some extra funds to put into the reserves. And then we have to decide what to do with those reserves. So as you see on the 2020 projected column, I've added to the capital reserve and the one-time uses reserves and got those up to the $5 million level on both of them. As we go along through these, I handed out something at the beginning of the meeting. It's more of a breakdown. It was, we sent it PDF through email and I think we got paper copies to everybody. It replicates what, the type of chart that you saw in the budget book, but it adds columns for the new projections. So you can kind of look at these in detail later as you get time and ask questions on the details. This is where we think '21 is coming out, where we think '22 will be as of now. And that's what's feeding the numbers that you see in these slides. All right. We'll go to the next slide, eight. This takes a look at what we did with the FY '20 fund balance and where the type of, it calculates the reserve we need at the end of '20 going into '21. According to our policy, if we come down with our, it's all based on the '21 revenue in the general fund, the parking fund, and the transportation fund. And that would tell us that we need a 15% reserve of $14.284 million. And we have a $21 million fund balance outside those reserves. Now, out of that 28 million, I've taken what's in the reserves out. And then I apportion the 3.4 million to each of the two reserve pockets. The budget stabilization fund is full right now. It's up to its max. So at the end of '20, we won't be able to add anything to that and we will put that difference in the reserve for one-time uses.
Can we ask a question?
Yes.
Alderman Tierney?
Is that okay? Okay. I didn't mean it very quickly. The transportation fund, does that, what does that include? Does that include any COVID money?
So when you're, the only place that you'll see transportation and parking fund numbers is in this handout that we got earlier. Right? This is, I did, I did a summary of those expectations. And we will be, the transportation fund will use some of its own CARES funding that it got through the Department of Transportation. And we use some for FY '20. We will have to use most of the rest of it in '21. That's because the parking fund will not have enough revenues in '21 to make a transfer to the transportation fund like we typically do.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted clarification if that was included in the 7 million.
No, this is all general fund here.
Okay, 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 got it.
The reason that the parking fund and transportation fund is in there is that's how we determine what level of general fund balance we need to have reserved. It's based on the revenue of those three funds added together, take 15% of that, and that's the reserve we have to keep in the general fund.
Okay.
That's why that's on there.
Alderman Finlayson, sir?
Um, no. Um, in the back of that, when I'm doing, am I reading this correctly? The required fund balance by the state is $14.2 million.
Mm-hmm.
What it projected in that fund balance reserve is 21.2 million.
Mm-hmm.
So the projected excess all over what is required by those is 6.9.
Correct.
It goes to highlight. I'm looking for the 3 million. Hey, was this due to?
So that's for '21. The, all FY '20.
Okay, do we have to add?
No, no, no. As we end '20, we have to calculate where all the reserves need to be. And when, as we draft the financial statements, we will put the reserve in the right pockets and then that flows into '21. The $3 million that was talked about in the paper that we provided, the 3.285 million dollar revenue shortfall, that's in '21. So what I'm showing you here is '20 was a pretty good year, relatively speaking. And going into '21, it gets tougher and tough again in '22, so.
The reserve that we are showing, the 6.9, will, can it, should it be moved into '21?
Oh, sorry.
It can be moved into '21. That would, normally, we would set that aside for one-time uses. If we use some of that reserve to cover some of our FY '21 operating expenses, we're not using it for one-time purposes. We're using it for continuing expenses like salaries, et cetera. So if we do that, we are creating a, what do you call it?
A structural?
Structural budget deficit going into the next year that we have to make up. As the revenues increase, we have to start covering that structural deficit. So we can, I think it would take, it goes against the policy, so I'm not sure what kind of action the council needs to take. And it may need like a supermajority approval of the council to do that. We would have to reprogram it into covering some of the shortfall for '21.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So going into 2022, you were saying we're also expecting another budget crunch, even as hopefully we return to somewhat normalcy in the next year. Based on, well, based on like what medical, what scientists, national health figures are saying on vaccine likelihood.
Right.
So yours, is how much of a crunch are we looking at in '22? Is it going to be that same 3.3 number? Is it going to be worse, we're thinking? Is it going to be better?
So that when you look at the, what I handed out in this handout, it takes you through all '21 and '22 and what I project now. And what we have in '22 is some revenues will start recovering, but things like effect on the personal property taxes that businesses pay, that could be severely impacted. The effect on income tax, we may not see that until '22, more in '22. Because right now, most of the remittances that we've been getting would be from before the shutdown or just at the beginning of the shutdown. So we haven't seen the full impact in our income tax remittances from the state. And I think that '22 is going to, overall, will get a little bit more in property taxes. Will go up about 2 million, but that's not as much as we typically see in an increase in a healthy economy. It's almost flat overall.
Maybe if we could hold that thought because the next presentation is going to have more detailed information on FY '20, '21, and '22, the projections of what the revenues are going to be and what the expenditures are going to be and potential deficits. So if we're ready to move on to that.
I have one more question, Mr. Gerald. So I know we don't want to get in the habit of using the excess revenue into structural expenses, but has the city ever done that before to patch certain holes in tough times to ensure that our services are adequate?
So I've been here for two years now, so I can't answer that, not in my tenure. But going into '21, we knew we had a little problem and there is a little bit of the use of the budget stabilization fund used as a structural support to the ongoing expenses. And this situation, if we decided to use more of it, would create a bigger issue. And some would say those are the times when you use these types of reserves is when you really need them. It's just that you have to know planning going forward into the next year so you have that to make up. And you just can't keep continuing to increase spending without considering if your revenues are going to make up for everything.
Thank you.
So Alderman Savage and Alderman Tierney, but Dave just said if we could get through to the next one, that would be great if it could be quick. So Alderman Savage was.
I'll save some of my others for later, but the one regarding this slide, I think it might be helpful to explain, and I remember this 3.5 from the budget. I think that's, if I remember correctly, that's the pool where we were, we were taking some money from that for one-time expenses for a few things. But it might be helpful to explain again why this 3.4 million doesn't represent any kind of surplus per se and why it's limited in terms of how we can use it.
So our policy for fund balance establishes that at the end of each year, we have to set aside a 15% reserve in the unrestricted general fund balance. That's what you see here with the 14.2. Our fund balance will be, should be around $6.9 million, higher than that. Our policy says we should be using that for one-time things, both capital reserve fund additions, so we can use it for construction. Capital projects are typically considered one-time expenses. And other one-time uses, you know, if you're going to implement a big software system or you're buying some capital items like the self-contained breathing apparatuses that the fire department is buying in the '21 budget. Those are one-time things that don't, wouldn't normally carry forward into the next year. So when you have, we have a surplus of 6.9 million, but you don't know if you're going to have that next year. So you don't want to count on it reoccurring every year.
And so the money that goes to the, to the fund balance are leftover funds from, the excess funds from transportation fund, parking fund, right? And the general fund?
So the calc, the only part of this that involves the parking or the transportation fund. fund is the calculation of how big the unreserved general fund balance needs to be. It only feeds into, these are budget, if you look at this calculation, you take the budgeted revenues in those three funds for the following year, you calculate 15% of that number. That is how much you have to have set aside in the general fund reserve. The rest of that goes into these other one-time uses. And so the leftover funds in the parking and the transportation funds do not play into this scenario. Now, I don't know that that's ever been an issue. The parking fund has been subsidizing the transportation fund, and neither fund has ever had a surplus fund balance. In fact, we've been trying to get them out of a deficit position and a negative cash position for several years. So we were, we were doing that. I'm not sure how that looks for '20 now, but, you know, we've been trying to get them out of a deficit position.
So Alderman Turney had a hand up, and then Alderman Finlayson.
Yeah, just very quickly, very quickly. I think it's, from my own knowledge too, is to, to recognize that this is a calculation based on policy. There's not really any judgment included in this particular slide.
Correct.
But to that point, it just, could you change those last threes to two in the last two line items?
Oh, yeah.
It's driving me crazy.
Yeah, that's going to bother you. Yeah, they're both rounded up, which makes it higher than the four that's there. Okay.
Thanks.
Are you an engineer?
Yeah, that's right. I would have caught that eventually, and I would have said, oh, that'll bug me too once I see it.
Alderman Finlayson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, I guess, a question for our law office. Is there anything in the code that directs us as to when, how we can go into our projected balance, into our fund balance reserve? Whether it's a pandemic, whether it's a devastating fires, or, I, I'm being kind of given examples, but is there anything in the code that directs us when we are, have the opportunity to go into our fund balance reserve?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
So are you asking about whether it says particular things? It doesn't say particular instances in which we can use it, no. It can be tapped into, even the 15% could be tapped into. That I know, I think it calls for a supermajority to, to tap into that 15% reserve.
But nothing, no adjectives that.
No, 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 particular events that say when you can do that or what the criteria is.
Thank you.
Okay, ready? All right, so.
David, is your mic on? I can't hear you too well.
Thank you. The next agenda item is ID 265-20, update of information on the FY '20, '21, and '22 budgets. So Julian, that was part of that same presentation, it was just at the, at the end of it. So if you just move forward from that last slide you were on, it will be the beginning of this presentation.
Are we ready? Okay. So we should be on 10? I think it was at, kept on the same PowerPoint, just. While they, while they get that going, I will point out that this packet has the revenues in detail, the expenditures in detail for general fund, parking, transportation, parking and transportation funds. And then there is a section for the fund balance, which takes these revenues and expense projections and rolls that fund balance forward, so you can see where we're at at the end of each year. And it will point, and, and we'll, we'll cover some of this stuff in a minute on what the effect is. But if you, as you have time after this meeting, you might want to kind of go through it and see where we, where we're going to have issues in the, in '21, '22. Okay, so we're on page 10. Oops, no, mine is page 10. Okay, 2020 projections, FY '20, '20 projections, it's right before that. I hope we have the right presentation up there. All right. So these show you the 2020 projections, the revenue and the expenditures. The revenue over expenditures for that year was 3.736. And that's higher than we had projected it during the budget process. It'll end, as you know, we talked about the '20 fund balance, 28.2, and that's going up from the '19 fund balance, 24.4. All right, next page. These are the '21 projections. Here you see the revised revenue projections and the expenditures. And the, the revenues have been revised downward for that 3.285 million dollars. And we revised the expenditures downward by 516,400, and that is the amount that the fire department has gotten in a grant to help pay for those self-contained breathing apparatuses that are going, that we, going to cost about $900,000. And they were, had applied for a grant during the budget process, but they did not have the award yet. And they did get the award, so that's less we have to spend for that purpose. And so other than those two items, these projections do not change from our budget that we set. I don't have enough history in the FY '21 expenses to see how we're trending overall this year, to see if we're, if we're saving money and any other elements. We've only got about two months' worth of transactions to use.
Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does that include the deficit that we allegedly have at this point of $3 million plus?
Right. That revenue number that you see there on this slide, that's 79,474, has been reduced by 3,285 from our original budget. And so it, it adjusted to what we think it's going to be at this point. And therefore, you see that deficit of 6.4 at the bottom. Now that, remember, that 6.4, some of that was planned. We were going to use budget stabilization for some of it. And it's got all the, it, it also includes, the expenditure number includes the use of reserves, so keep that in mind when you see that 6.4 number.
Thank you.
A lot of that was planned. The 3.285 was not planned.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for walking out a few moments ago. You've, you've heard of Grubhub. I've got made aid. I forgot my hearing aids. I forgot how hard it is to hear in this room. And sorry about that, but believe me, it's a good thing that I picked these up.
We thought this would have kept you here.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move on to the next. Let's see, all right. So then on, on this FY '22 projections, this is with what I project with the revenues for '22. And if we project expenditures for '22, including the COLAs that we covered before, 3% for everybody, 2% for police. And I included a 2% increase for non-employee costs. I did, I looked at some projections on the internet, some of the agencies that do these projections, and a lot of them are projecting that inflation going from '21 into '22 is anywhere from 1.8% to 2.1%. So I just used a general 2% inflation factor on all non-payroll related items. And if you remember, our police and fire pension contributions are going up from 28.2% of salary to 33% of salary. So the police and fire contributions are going up for '22 as well. So you see the effect on this expenditure number, 91.3 million, and that does include, I, I plugged in a 2 million use for the capital, of the capital reserve fund, so that is in the $91 million number. So for the operating purposes, we've got about 89,358 operating expenses projected against 81.9 million of revenue. So this is something that has to be addressed.
Jody, question. So since we now know that we clearly have a deficit and that this will go into who knows when, are we able to revisit negotiations with this group again or no?
Are, you're talking about negotiations with the union?
Yeah.
We are planning that. We're going to talk to them about this and get their thoughts and talk to them about what we can do. Because it's accumulation of the shortfall we have this year rolling into next year, it's, it's gonna, it's going to multiply.
Alderman Finlayson.
Yes, speaking of negotiations, we worked very hard to get our pension where it needed to be for our employees, our police and fire. Is there a way, or is there research being done to see how we can slow that? You know, we're going from 28% to 32%. Not so long ago, we were at 6%. And we need it to get to where we are now.
Right.
We absolutely need it to. But looking at this, this picture, and, you know, and David as our chief negotiator, is that something that everybody will look at to see? You know, we don't want to put our, set our employees back, but if there's a way to slow that getting to 32%, maybe a percent a year or something, I, I don't know what the options might be.
I will say the 33% was determined by the actuary. An actuary did a study and found that we were not contributing enough because the assumptions that we were using about life expectancy and the increase to salaries over time, they project how much we need to set aside for the people that are working for us now and those that are already retired. And we were not doing that. So our unfunded liability was growing, and we need to get to 33. And we agreed that we would go to 28.2 the first year and 33 the next year to accommodate all the recommendations that they made in the study. If you don't, you can choose not to, but if you don't, then we will have a larger unfunded pension liability. And I, I think it was 80-something percent this last year that would probably drop to how much is funded. So it's to the police and fires' benefit that we continue to try to fund that, to the actuary's recommendation, so that we set us, set aside. I mean, the only thing that we can do to that end is look at the payouts that the pension fund gives to retirees, which I'm not sure that's where we'd want to go, so.
Yeah, and you'll recall that when we talked about this in the spring, it was when the stock market had taken a nosedive, and we were concerned that it was going to go up even higher to make up for those losses in the stock market. The stock market has pretty well bounced back, so some of those concerns are late. At least for now, it, it may go, it may have another drop in the future, depending on how the election goes. But, but at least for now, those, those big concerns about the stock market decrease have, have faded away. So now we're back to, to that number that we had, the 33%.
So Alderman had his hand up first, then Alderman Savage.
I'm sorry, I would never suggest that we do anything to hurt our employees, absolutely. I just wondered if, you know, there's a way to slow things up a bit until we get to a better place. And, and I've seen all the numbers comparing what the actuary says and what other jurisdictions are doing and all of that. This would also impact our bond rating, would it not?
If you have.
Since we made that commitment.
If, what's your question? If we did not make the actuarial recommended contribution, it, it would be one of the factors that the bond rating agencies consider when doing a rating. I don't know if it would directly impact it or not. They take a lot of things into consideration when, when looking at the bond rating, but it is one of the things they look at, whether or not we're funding our pensions.
I know back in the day, they did consider it, previous administrations, that we were not funding our.
Yes.
Liability for our.
Up till about three years ago, we were not, and it was pretty low compared to what our costs were, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman was next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this really is one of the key core fiscal issues that we need to grapple with, and it's not an easy one. As Alderman, Alderwoman Finlayson said, this is a commitment that we've made to our public safety employees. Further, as you know, we're having trouble staffing up in police, and this is one of the recruit and retain things that we need to do just to keep what we have, but hopefully to get us up to full complement. I've been thinking about this ever since I've been on the council and certainly Chair of the Finance Committee, and the only conclusion that I can come to is, the only way this number can go down is if numbers of employees go down. I, I don't see another solution. And yet, as you'll hear with, with my core services or request from Ward Eight, public safety is the number one request from my constituents. So we're in a real bind here, folks, but that number, deficit of 9.4, first of all, we, our managers do such a good job in managing their funds that I don't expect that will be the final number. I think it'll be much less than that, but I do think that we face a real prospect of a deficit. Even if it's half of that number, that num, that deficit is equal to the size of some of our departments. So this is the core issue for us, and, and this is really, for me, the primary reason for having this retreat, is we've got to come to grips with what happens if that or something like it is the real deficit? What are we going to do? Jody's done a good job of lying out, laying out the drivers. I think the estimates are reasonable, 2% is the growth that we expect in these kinds of costs. And so that is the elephant on the table, the number that we have to talk about when we think about fiscal '22. And I hope we get back to having some lively discussion on this.
Alderman Savage and Alderman Gay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dickinson. This is helpful to see how you've laid it out here and for the handouts. I'm just comparing it to the handouts. So the thing that, just echoing what my colleague from Ward Eight said, it is kind of disturbing, because if you look at revenue on page six, you know, FY '20, FY '20 was, let's see, projected was 82 million. FY '21, 79 million. FY '22 projected 81 million. So that's kind of really remaining steady over the years, it looks like, that revenue, more or less. Certainly not going up much. But the expenses, if you look back at, on page two, expenses in FY 2019, 82 million. And then FY '21, 86. FY '22, 91 million. So that's an increase in expenses of $10 million in just two fiscal years, or three fiscal years. That is incredible. And so, and don't, and don't get me wrong, I, I think we needed to increase the pension requirements. I think that was a huge mistake of the previous administration to not fund those. Because to me, I think as a government employee, that's really, is kind of a sacred agreement you make with your employees from day one, is that commitment to have a retirement that's funded. You know, not, I mean, I think cost of living increases and other raises are a separate matter. But, so essentially, what you're saying, that $10 million increase in expenditures is due to the funded pension and to all the things you listed here, the COLA stuff increases. Is, are there any other expenses in there that have contributed to that?
It is. It is COLA increases, step increases, the increase to the pension contributions, and the 2% increase on the non-payroll related items. And remember, benefits increase, some benefits increase proportionally to salary. FICA goes up, your percent, the amount that you give to the pension plan, even if the amount stays, the percent stays steady, would increase too. So those increases to salary feed a lot of increases on the benefit side. So those, yes, all go together, and then, like I said, I did the 2% for everything else. And, and I don't know if that'll hold up, maybe that'll be better, but I'm just giving you what, where we could be at that point. And this is not unusual for an organization with this, with 70% of your expenses being in salaries. That's a big number, even if it's going up a modest amount every year. The step increases on the scale are 5.38% from step to step. So anybody who gets a step gets that 5%. And that's something that's agreed to in the union agreements, and that's something that's provided to the non-represented employees as well. So not everybody gets a step. There are some departments that have employees that have been here longer, and as you get up into those upper steps, you have to wait years, a few years before you get another step. So it's not that everybody's getting 5% every year. And so it just depends on your workforce in the department that drives that.
Right. Well, I guess at some point, I'd like to have, see more of, more of a breakdown of exactly where that cost is coming from, because it's clearly not sustainable. I mean, you know, you even, you mentioned salaries grew, let's see, between fiscal year 19 and 20, it was 3.79%.
Right.
And then between FY20 and 21, it went up to almost 10%. That's another incredible increase.
I just, something just occurred to me, within those numbers for 22, as an increase in the amount that the general fund is going to send over to the self-insurance fund, we have a reserve in the self-insurance fund, and we have a large payout to pay for a recently settled case. And we are going to, the actuarial's contribution increased, I think it's 1.1, 1.2 million for 22. We're going to have to pay in an extra million to make sure that we have enough of a reserve over there for ongoing cases.
For what cases?
For ongoing cases in the self-insurance fund. The actuary will tell us where our reserve needs to be.
But that's not part of that salary increase, the 10%.
No, but it's, it's in my, the finance department, non-allocated department, has a transfer from the general fund to the self-insurance fund. That number for 22 increased by 1.1 or 1.2.
That's in the overall expenses.
So that's in that number. Where you see that big delta, that's part of that too, because you were asking, your question was, what else is in there that bumped that number up? That's part of it.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful. I mean, there's still $9 million then that we need to, but in any case, that's kind of one of my bigger points for the, concerns for the budget is clearly things are growing unsustainably on the, on the expenditure side, and I think we need to get a better understanding of what we can do about it.
In a, in a strong economy, your property taxes go up, your income taxes grow, you know, tourism revenue grows, so many times that could keep pace with what we're, what we plan on expenditure increases. But when you have an economy that's faltering and the income is now, you know, we have, I don't know what the unemployment rate is at now, but it was as high as 20% at one time. I think it's come back a little bit from that, that high. And that is going to increase the amount, that's going to decrease what you're getting in as revenues, and it'll offset other increases. And all of our tourism revenue that we determine, that we depend on here are flat or dropping right now. So I'm just saying that at this point in time, because of the state of the economy, our expenditures are growing at a, at a higher rate than our revenues. But in a very healthy economy, we may very well be able to keep up with that pace.
Yeah, I think that'd be a huge jump, but, I mean, even in FY 20, under good situation, it was, well, until the spring, it was 79 million in revenues, which wasn't enough.
You okay? Alderman Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I probably should know the answer to this, but I don't have my budget book in front of me. But you touched upon it with Alderman Savage. And so the line item, like number nine on the front page for non-allocated finance, that is sort of a placeholder for, for what?
That's got debt service in it, which is $8 million. So 8 million of that number is debt service on our bonds.
And don't, I'm, don't, I'm not nitpicking.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm trying to go down in my head now and go through the list of things that are in there. These transfers to the self-insurance fund. The city makes a $1 million contribution for retiree healthcare every year that goes into the OPEB fund. What else am I missing? The contingency fund is in there. There's about $500,000 set aside for the contingency fund. I know I'm missing some.
So you use that basically, for lack of a better word, as sort of a placeholder?
It's, it's actually calculated based on what we know we're going to have to pay, what we estimate we're going to have to pay. It's, you know, when you say placeholder, there's a list of things that add up to that number. Most of them are set, and we know what they're going to be.
That's, yeah, I only point it out because it looks skewed, you know, with other line items.
It's a big number.
So thank you for that explanation, which is very important for my colleagues to know that it's not a, you know, the finance department.
Yeah, I wish. Wish I had the bigger turn.
Who are these people?
Alderman Turner, Alderman Finlayson, sir?
Yes, my question was about the same item. And Jody, you clarified our self-insurance is in, well, first of all, I noticed several slides back that your department was the largest of all of the departments in the city.
And that would be why.
And that would be why, because of the non-allocated line item, which includes, you know, all the things that you've mentioned.
Yes.
So we should expect to see that line item larger consistently.
Mm-hmm.
Because you've, okay, I'm good, thank you.
They put it in finance, for want of a better place to put it. It's called non-allocated. It's not really related to finance. It's related to all departments.
This is just a quick off-topic for David. What happened to the glass and stuff we were supposed to be getting to protect us?
Yeah.
Yeah. I asked, what happened to the personal protective equipment that we were supposed to get, Plexiglas?
Yeah, we're, we're still working on that. So the target date for that is to reopen council meetings in January, so all of those things will be in place. For this meeting, we social-distanced and didn't try to rush those. There is no way to get those done in time, but they'll be done for the January meeting.
Jody, you want to continue?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's not that much more. On the next, we have FY22, oh, that's, that's what it was on, hold on. And then, that's it, I think. Did I get to the last slide?
Last slide.
Okay. Then we are done with our prepared presentation, and I think we're ready to move on, unless you have any more questions.
Any wrap-up stuff, Dave?
Ready to move on to the next agenda item.
Okay, let's get some questions out before we move on. Alderman Annett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what, I know what's next on the agenda, and I understand the pieces that are coming after we each give you our input, but do we have a plan in this meeting, or should we plan a future meeting to, of committing of the council as a whole, to go back to discussing the composition of this potential nine-and-a-half million dollar deficit? Because I think that's where the council really does have to focus. We need to get a sense of each other's feelings about how we address that, and I think that has to be conveyed to the staff as we go into the preparation of the fiscal 22 budget.
Yeah, I guess my hope is that not only do we talk about priorities today, but kind of the inverse of the priorities, and that's reduction opportunities as well. Because the highest priority things will need to get, get funded, but, but those other items that aren't the priorities, that don't come out as priorities in this meeting, are those opportunities for reductions. Because that's, that's what we really need, is we need to know where we put our money, and then everything else is lower priority, subject to cuts potentially.
And I'll add that one of the things that I put in my projections is that we keep the tax rate what it is, constant rate, to provide another 3% of revenue. I wanted to, that's one of the assumptions, I wanted to make sure that I, that I told you, it doesn't, it's not constant yield, it's constant rate. So that's in, that's in my projections.
Alderman Gay?
So is that at the end? I think to Ross's point, some, yeah, I would like to discuss some ideas that we talked about even in the last budget process, as it relates to employment salaries and stuff like that in the next year. So we will have the opportunity to do that? Like for deficits and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
I think we should, yeah. I think that's a part, part of this discussion today.
I, you know, talked to, or just shot a quick message to a couple of my colleagues a couple of weeks ago, and I thought that, I don't know how the process works, but before, it's too late. Are we able to take, would, if we were to put in, I don't know, legislation to say like, employees that make over $100,000 or something like that, or on a pay freeze or something like that, does it have to be done in the budget cycle, or can we do that outside of it? Like, it doesn't have to be done in April through June, it could be done now?
Well, normally, normally it's done as part of the, the budget process. You would incorporate something like that into the, to the budget for the, for the next year.
But if we just decided to do it in like January to prepare, could we?
I guess I'd ask the city attorney to weigh in on that, to change the salary tables.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that the code provides for you to make inter-year budget adjustments. However, I think we'd have to see what the code provides, because right now, it's something that's never been done. It's not provided for in the code, so I'm not quite sure without a further review whether it would be in your authority, absent the budget year process.
And, and I, we may have covered this already, but the tables are set forth in the union agreements too, so it's not something we can just change, except for non-reps. You know, we could, we could change the tables for non-reps, but not for the unions without talking to them first.
And when you did the initial research, when we asked if we were to, I couldn't remember if we said freeze, we wanted to do something with non-reps, and it totaled out to about, what, 400 grand? If there was no...
There was no COLA, I think.
Yeah, no COLA, okay. Gotcha.
So Alderman Savage was next, and Alderman Finlayson?
Just a very short comment. I'm looking back at the previous budgets, because I just want to, again, this is why I'm worried, because even under good economic times, we weren't making enough revenue to, to keep pace. So back in FY18, revenue was 74 million. FY19, after the, what was it, 6 cent tax increase, it went up to 84 million. That's still way under. So even under good economic times, we didn't have enough to keep pace with this 91 million. That's, I think we need to keep that in mind. We can't rely on good economic times. We have to figure out another solution.
Alderman Finlayson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this is some of an actuarial question. How much more will we know about FY22 projections after November 3rd and after January 21st?
I'm not sure how quickly we'll know after those dates. Whatever measures, you know, there's bound, I would assume the market will, the stock market will react, it'll affect investment balances, but we won't know what policies are going to go into effect that may change things until after those dates. And I'm not sure when we would see how that's going to impact us, if we would see that right away. I will be updating my projections for these revenues every other month and presenting them. And the more I see the income tax receipts come into us, because of course, they go through the state first, and as they start coming to us, we'll see if it's going down, if it's staying flat, if it's going up. We'll see that trend as we go through the year. The property taxes, I, the assessed value, I'm expecting, we're on a three-year cycle, and the assessed values for residential are going up at about 9%, which means we can take in, we spread that over the three years, 3% increase in the assessed value on year one, which would be for our FY22. So I expect assessed values will go up 3%. And, and that's pretty, that's, that's a pretty set number. It's the personal property taxes that businesses pay that can be affected by what's going on now. If businesses start to shut down, they'll close and they're, they won't have the personal property at their businesses to be able to tax, so that value will drop off. But I did try to factor that into my projections as they are now.
Alderman Gay had his hand up then, Alderman Finlayson?
Yeah, I just have a question about general display, and I think I kind of asked this last year as well. Is it any, is there any possible way that you could give us a, I don't know, maybe a dumbed-down version of the budget where we see, I don't know, I'll just use like, all right, Wrecks and Parks says they're doing this on front, but how come we don't have that for police and fire though? I want to be able to see for police and fire exactly how the 21 million is spent, like every single penny of it.
I could give you, for police and fire, you see, Wrecks and Parks has their accounts divided by their different divisions within our accounting system. Police and fire each have only one division, but we can give a breakdown of salaries, benefits, and the other expense items for, up through 21, as much detail. But the 22 projections, again, we could probably do that as well.
The 22 projections, I won't be that crazed, but just from, if possible, could you do like the last two budget cycles, like a breakdown of every, yeah?
Police and fire, is that detail account level detail for police and fire through 21? Katie's writing that down, right? Yeah.
All right, Katie. Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would hope that when we're doing the research on those that make over $100,000 in the system, that we also look at how we got here. That includes years of experience and, and the like. I don't, it, it feels like we think that we just dropped these high salaries onto people without them having to work for them over years. And educational experience and all of that must be taken into consideration as we're talking about, you know, what, what is perceived as big salary. And competitively, where are we? What are, what's the county doing? You know, why are we losing police officers to Anarundal County instead of enticing them to stay here with us? So there's, there's more to this picture. So as we have this discussion, let's have the entire discussion so that all the factors are considered before we, you know, start talking about decisions. Thank you.
Alderman Annett, had his hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to follow on with Sheila's remarks, that's why we have a class and comp study. We have one that was done a while ago. We never did finish the analysis of that, but it does compare us to how we look to the governmental and non-governmental cohorts surrounding us. I think that the last study found that we were, with some exceptions, pretty much in sync with surrounding jurisdictions. I think that some we were low, and we took some actions to address that. I think some we were a little high. We didn't take action to address those, but I think that's how we look at it. We have an HR system. It's based on HR principles. Our HR director, I personally believe, is very, very competent at looking at these kinds of comparisons and appropriate levels of pay. I, unfortunately, I've never found that to be... I, unfortunately, I've never found that to be a big place to find money when we're falling short. I, I, I don't think that we're going to find much at the end of that rainbow, but it is, it is something that we do as an administration, look at from time to time, and the last three that happened on, during my tenure, we came out looking reasonable.
Alderman Gay had his hand up then, Alderman Channel Meyer?
Yeah, I think that when you suggest something like that, you just have to look at the times. I mean, obviously, everyone has worked hard to receive some sort of, you know, benefit or pay, but look around the world. People are, leaders in office are doing it because they realize it's the right thing to do, and they realize that they have to, in turn, provide for their constituency. So, I would never suggest it as just some off-the-cuff idea for fun, but something that we look into more seriously. And I think, while we're still just talking about, you know, resources and funding and all of that, I mentioned this in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I would really, really like to hold to pressure the state and the county, in particular, the county that does not pay a single dime because of shared services. Listen, you know, we are about, we're going through some hard times, you have to kick out your funding, start to pay for your buildings and your, and, and, you know, the taxes and stuff. The same for the state and this pilot, or, or the pilot program payment in lieu of tax, I think we're down to $350,000. What are we supposed to do with that? What are we supposed to do with $350, Larry Hogan? I mean, it is crazy. So, we have to be aggressive in those approaches.
Alderman Channel Meyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to remind colleagues that we are in a very poorly ventilated space, so masks should be worn unless we are eating or drinking, covering your nose as well, please. Second of all, yeah, it's my healthcare policy. Second of all, how much do we lose out by not collecting tax revenue or payment in lieu of taxes from the county? I know we had a recent confrontation with the state about that, and I, we seriously don't think getting $350 for that?
300 and, 3...
$150,000, okay, thank you. But I, that's, the coffee hasn't kicked in fully. I apologize.
No, it's $367,000, and that, there's a long story behind that. We've been trying to get more for years, and up until last year, we did. And then the state passed legislation for us to set that level at $750,000 and made it go into effect for FY21. But in the initial budget that was proposed, it, we were funded at 750, and then in a cost-cutting measure, as a way to address COVID, the governor cut us back down to $367,000. And that initiative was carried by the legislature, not by the governor's office, so they cut that back down, so we're getting $367,000 now. Now, it's, I think the law holds, where next year, we're supposed to get $750,000, but we'll see what happens in '22, if we'll get that, or they'll try to cut it back again.
Okay. The second of all, I apologize if this is a silly question, but when you're new, sometimes you got to ask them. Are we having any expenses that have had a significant impact of the budget this year due to COVID that probably will not end up coming up next year, once we get the disease hopefully more under control, at least by the halfway point of the year?
We have incurred a lot of extra expenses related to COVID. Fortunately, the county gave us a sub-grant of their money of $4.2 million, $4.25 million of their money to help cover those. And we have to, according to the federal law that, that passed out that money, we have to spend it by December 30th, and right now, there's been no successful legislation to extend that deadline. So, we, we are spending it, we are trying to get that money into programs and into helping us cover our own costs up through December 30th. After that, we'll have to incur anything that comes up ourselves unless they give us, unless they pass out some of the funding.
Is that coming out of, like, our, our surplus revenue, so it's not one-time expense?
It's a grant, it's a grant, so it's accounted for in our grants funds, and we are moving all of those expenses over to the grant fund, so they don't show up in the general fund now. We're able to cover some of our salaries, our public safety salaries that are related to COVID, we're moving those over as well. And we're, we've also developed a few other programs about the recovery zones, community funding, food pantry-type assistance that we are funding through that money.
Okay. And my final question, and this might be a question for the law office, do you have the authority to more specifically target property tax revenue, such as only on higher-value homes and properties?
The...
Or when we put a property tax increase in, does that only impact, does that have to impact everyone in the city? Basically, I'm trying to go after rich people.
Yeah, your, your property tax increase has to be done in a uniform and consistent way.
Okay.
You cannot discriminate, for lack of a better word.
We do not have progressive property tax policy.
Yeah, because basically what happens is people who have a commercial or residential property that is valued higher or assessed higher are paying more, right? For every thousand, hundred dollars of value, right? So, that is the way that you are taxing now, it is progressive. So, you do have ways to tackle that, but it cannot be arbitrary and discriminatory. We have to be very careful at how you couch what you're trying to do. And I would focus you on having a tax system that is fair across the board, because if it is challenged during the course of the year, you're going to have problems, because whatever you calculated, you might have to start reimbursing folks if, if we get defeated in a court case. Secondarily to that, with respect to Alderman Gay's question about cutting salaries, I've done a little research, and HR would have to do, and the council would have to do a serious review of what that means across salaries for exempt employees. Why? Because you want to make sure that you're not violating Fair Labor Standards Act, as well as benefits, that you are paying, health benefits as well, that you're paying based on a certain salary, that you're not aggregating that. So, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't, one, rush out and do it, you'd need a study by HR to show exactly how it could be done safely and securely for the city. Secondarily, you would need to think prospectively. So, you wouldn't be able to do it in a year, because what would happen is, even if you saved $1 million, the code says that you can't spend or obligate money that's outside of the budget, right? So, that's the first rule. You can do it by a supplemental appropriation. So, what you're doing is, you're trying to take some money from pot A that was budgeted, put it in pot B. The code prevents you from doing that in the year because it's not obligated. You have to do that at the budget year. You can do it through a supplemental appropriation, but that is, again, a process that is probably not going to get you where you need in any particular year, because we're already, you know, one-third or one-quarter of the, through the year now. So, the time that you do that probably puts you in another budget season anyway. So, it may be best to think about it prospectively. Jurisdictions who do wish to cut salary in economic times where there is less funding do it mostly through furloughs of some period of days, which falls within the line of authority for executives and legislative branches of jurisdictions, especially in the state of Maryland that I'm aware of, but also throughout the country. That's the way that you kind of deal with the bad economic times as it relates to your salaried employees. However, you do have an issue with non-salaried employees who might be making some threshold that you find, you know, is a problem for you. But you would have less authority to deal with those, be they collective bargaining agreement-based or non-exempt employees.
Brooks?
Yeah.
You can't go after Russ like that, no.
Right.
The rich guy in the room, just checking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The CARES funding that we received, the grant we received from the county, by December 30th, does that have to be spent or encumbered?
For the most part, spent. They said that, that encumbrance will be considered if you have ordered it, but for no fault of your own. It hasn't come in because of, there's a lot of demand on certain things at this time, and if they can't fill the order because of the increase of demand because of COVID, then it can come in later than December 30th. But for the most part, it has to be expended by December 30th. We're working on it.
Any other questions? Everybody having fun at the retreat? How we all doing?
I can hear it.
In between, there's guns. So, Mr. City Manager, shall we move on to the individual counselors in order now?
Yep. So, it's just a time check, it's 11:40 right now, so we can either take a bit of an early lunch and then come back with the, the council priorities, or we can jump right into that and then take a break later and delve right into this. Any thoughts?
Yeah, put your, put your hand up if you want to get lunch now.
It's not here yet?
You mean, get lunch or have it brought to us?
Well, what's...
It's not here yet, so...
Oh, it isn't?
Is it coming at noon?
Can we take a five-minute break, eh?
Yeah, let's take a bathroom break for five minutes, that's a good idea.
I don't want to miss anybody's...
The one, the one bathroom we'll all run to, right?
Yeah.
I got a game on, I just got... What's the protocol here?
Just a recess, just a emotional recess. You, you, it's a retreat, you, you got a lot of flexibility. Yeah, just tell me, no, you're good, no, it's a work session. Yeah.
Should I move that we adjourn? You can have a five-minute recess.
It's not necessary.
No.
The mayor can just call a recess, five minutes.
Back here at 11:45, please. Back here at 11:45, please. Rob, we're gonna make you responsible for bringing everyone back in. It was your... Cause what? Yeah. Well, I like the windows open, yeah. Yeah. Who we got? We got, who we missing? We're missing Sheila. Brooks, Sheila, Rob. Are you grabbing them, Rob? Great. There we go. So, just Brooks, and we're good? See Brooks out there? I know you guys don't want to go over two o'clock, so... Is it good, or...
All right, ready to go.
Yeah. Maybe not the best COVID food. Got to eat with your hands. We are ready. How are we looking? We got everyone in here?
Yep. Ready.
Yep. Okay. One, two, three, four, eight. Mr. City Manager, are we ready? All set? Okay. Videos on. We're live. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is ID 26620, presentation by all the persons of their budget priorities for FY '22.
Okay, and in order, the first up is Ellie, Alderman Ellie Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How much time do I have? I don't want to go over. God, no. All right, well, just, just let me know if I could go on. I'll just read my presentation. My objective was to incorporate, well, our objective was to incorporate respective city council priorities in the next annual budget. The major consideration was our anticipated shortfall going into 2021. My preparation, to prepare for this meeting, I initiated a survey to my constituents addressing our core services, public safety, parks, street and city maintenance, as well as beautification of downtown. My goal was to have a measure of their satisfaction or lack thereof in the city's basic services as it relates to property tax. The results were surprising to me, as my constituents are very vocal about these issues. It was a community survey, but there was no pattern of below satisfaction on any of these issues. Some issues that don't cost that much money that go a long way, such as beautification of Main Street, I addressed very quickly. So, I will continue with my analysis. Getting back to the measure of property taxes that relates to services, I just want to share this. I did ask 10 questions. I don't want to go over my survey, but I thought this was very telling, because this is, to me at least, is sort of the bellwether of evaluating our core services as representing my constituency. And this is Ward-centric. I apologize for that, but it's Ward 1. Do you agree that your property taxes are fair for the services the city provides, i.e. life safety, public works, amenities, city response, time, et cetera? 2% said strongly agree. 26.26% said agree. 13% said somewhat agree. 5% said neither agree or disagree. 21% said somewhat disagree. 21%, 19% said disagree, and 13% said strongly disagreed. So, what that showed me, again, it's unscientific, is that we're, I'm sort of at the tipping point there, because the bar, I have it in graphical form, that the agree bar is the longest. So, that's good. That's good. And then it tapers off to somewhat disagree. So, there wasn't anything alarming. So, what I do is, what I did was I addressed expenditures very quickly, because I know, you know, understanding the overall situation. My first one is beautification. I want to optimize our existing contribution to downtown Annapolis partnership. I believe we give them $50,000. And insist, among other programs, that they provide the hanging baskets on Main Street and resurrect blooming Annapolis again, that for whatever reason, they stopped doing that. And this should not be a budget expense, but just something that, a little thing like that goes a long way, because when it's missing, it's so obvious. And, and so, on expenditures, oh, sorry, I'm spitting. On expenditures also, and I'll let my colleague speak to this, affordable housing. Although I don't have opportunity sites in my ward, I want to support my colleague in earmarking money for more affordable housing. The model I researched was San Antonio, which included a long-term coordinated housing plan. I think it's premature to state what that is until we have recommendations for the newly formed Housing Task Force. But it does address an issue in Ward 1, which I think we can explore, which I've listed in the possible revenue section below. Revenue. As you all know, approximately 70% or 69% of our revenue comes from property tax, which is an unsustainable relationship if our expenses increase more than assessments. Therefore, my priority was to look for opportunities for needed revenue. Here are my two ideas. I wish to incorporating the budget as needed to initiate. I'm looking at the long game on both of them. The first one is, again, Ward-specific, is taxing vacant, well, it could expand into other words, but taxing vacant properties and introducing a vacant home rehab program. Consistently in Ward 1, we have structures that have been neglected and remain vacant. As you know, in Ward 1, we have small lots and limited real estate, so these properties are a liability and that they cause unnecessary and somewhat futile enforcement time from our planning and zoning department, and they are a lost source of property tax, which we need. City Attorney Michael Lyles and I will be drafting vacant property legislation modeled after Oakland, California, to institute a tax penalty primarily, primarily on these residential parcels. In the legislation, there will be obvious and understandable exceptions, such as elderly or financial hardship, et cetera. This will focus on absentee ownership with no incentive to occupy or improve their property to be safe and viable. If the penalty tax is not paid, the city, similar to Baltimore, can obtain the property in receivership. I ask that the budget incorporate a vacant home rehab program, where a buyer is incentivized to use the property for affordable housing, modeling what has been done in San Antonio. For now, I wish a placeholder for this initiative, until we do more research in how this can successfully work. Okay? And my second and last for revenue opportunities, and let me just stay a little philosophy before I introduce this. What I tell my constituents, if any of them complain about the property tax, I have to reiterate to them that we are a city. You know, as we're sitting here, we're going to hear sirens. We're a city. And there is not one city I know where I can go within feet of, of the Mecca or City Dock or whatever, you know, the central business district, and not have to pay for parking, whether it be two bucks an hour or a buck an hour. You know, that's, that's the city, you know? So, with that, I'm very excited about this opportunity. It's implementing Park Mobile in residential parking districts. As you know, there are residential parking districts in the city of Annapolis. Most of them, if not all of them, are in my ward. I think there's one in Alderman Peone's ward. And basically, it protects the residents in that they get a permit to park in, on the street, near or in front of their house, what have you. At the time, the thought was to share that parking real estate with tourists coming in. And we allowed the tourists or shoppers to have free parking for two hours. If they exceeded two hours, they got a ticket. What this Park Mobile does is it's just signs, basically. This is a Park Mobile neighborhood. The residents, it doesn't affect the residents, because they still get their free parking. But anyone else, very simply, has to download the Park Mobile code and get, and pay, like, two bucks an hour. But let me just, just bear with me. This can be used to support our transportation system, and it may give our parking revenue relief, and revenue may be, may be used differently. I understand that a citywide parking plan may be implemented in tandem with a successful bidder for Hillman. However, this idea is limited to the residential parking districts. I explained all that. I think that it's very obvious that we can't afford to provide them for free anymore with these dire projections. And I believe, at this time only, with political will, we will be able to institute this in the districts. Businesses on Maryland Ave will push back, so we will need to have some options for them. Perhaps one hour free in Hillman, which will drive shoppers to long-term parking and stay longer. So, all I'm asking for this budget cycle is to include the signage to implement a pilot. And that pilot would be, most likely, on Prince George and King George Street District, where we presently have the no parking, and so it's, it's a good opportunity. And working, and these are just estimates, okay? And very conservative, very quickly, and then I'm done. I don't want to throw out any money. With assumptions and occupancy data, we, this, there isn't, we estimated, and this is from data, not anecdotal, from our parking management company, that we could approach 2 million per year if all current permitted districts required transient parkers, non-permitted residents or their guests to pay for the time parked, rather than have up to two hours of free parking. It doesn't affect residents coming in, because they all, all residents have free two-hour parking in their garages. So, as a pilot would entail a much smaller scale, so implying these assumptions, these same assumptions, which I won't get into, then they're conservative to RPP District 1. If we just did a pilot on one district, the revenue potential is approximately $310,000 per year. If we did District 2, the revenue potential is closer to $330,000 per year. So, I just think it's an opportune time. And it would have, I would have to have support and political will from all of my colleagues, because you know how parking is. You know, you're going to get revolt. But this is in, you know, it isn't downtown. It's residential parking districts. So, I think that's all I have, and thank you for your time.
It has been interesting during COVID, because Mitchell has said that she has received very few complaints on parking, which we thought would be, you know, the big thing when we took so much away. So, it was surprising that. And Ellis Sevo was surprising as well.
Yeah. I think that's the one, there's some few positives about COVID, and it has sort of lessened our auto-centric mentality. You know, with these street closures, it has. I mean, it hasn't evolved about parking. It's about, you know, protecting these public spaces. So, we're getting there, baby steps.
Alderman Chanema?
Thank you, Alderman Tierney. I, one thing I found interesting was to kind of compensate for the removing of free street parking in Ward 1 in the downtown area is providing an hour of potentially free service in the garages. Do you think that runs the potential risk of overcrowding them, though?
Yeah, no, what, I know the, I know the predicted response so well that I believe we will, we'll get protests from the Maryland Ave businesses, because Maryland, you know where Maryland Ave is, and they rely on their shoppers, or themselves more mostly, to park adjacent to like Prince George or King George. So, they're, you know, they're going to be upset, like, you're hurting us if you, if you want our shoppers to pay $2 an hour. But, but guys, I, $2 an hour is not that much money to stop and shop in a downtown district. And that's why we have to keep this city mentality, because that's what our property taxes are paying for, the services of a city. And so, we need to be really creative on looking for other sources of revenue to keep the services that we have. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't want to be in a position where we have to cut. My approach to this was, let's look outside the box and look for creative opportunities for, for revenue in line with the services that we provide.
I would like to say I personally agree with you. The $2 for parking has never stopped me from going downtown for lunch. But I, maybe this might be something to ask in a committee meeting where we can get the traffic engineers in. My one small concern is maybe it would overcrowd the garages, and you wouldn't have the same amount of spaces.
Yeah, I didn't answer it specifically. I, I think that in, we would be reactive to that, and I suggest that we would just give it, offer it to the Maryland Ave businesses. I think that's, we could give them passcode. We could give them the coupons or something, just so it softens the...
so it softens the, so I, yeah. But again, I think we need to have a full, you know, I wouldn't do this on my own. You saw what happened when I tried to raise City Dock waterfront parking $2 an hour. You know, but it's, we're in a dire situation. Okay, I'm done.
And we're good for questions, Dave, right? Is that okay on the timeline? Yep, okay. Next up, Alderman Peown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nine things, three of which are Ward-specific, that I would consider to be a priority. I'll go through the Ward-specific projects first, and that is, the first one would be community projects, most of which are on, Public Works has submitted as long-term projects. Sidewalks along Cedar Park Road, as the mayor is personally familiar with. The children that go to Germantown Elementary School and live in the back part of Admiral Heights have to walk. They walk along Cedar Park Road, they walk in Cedar Park Road because there's no alternative. It's very dangerous. It's a winding road where people drive faster than they should be driving. It breaks my heart every time I drive down there about 3:15 to 3:30, and there are little kids, first graders, catching up with the fifth and sixth graders to walk with them. They walk in groups, which is a very smart thing for kids to have figured out. But it's extremely dangerous. I've been trying for probably 10 years to get this project done. We finally have it on our to-do list, if you will, and it needs to be done, it needs to be done right away. The second part is, would come under recreation, and there are no parks in Westonapolis. We can't really, well, we can use the school, certainly, the inside of the school, but the outside, there really, there's really not much there. There's a very small playing field. It's about 30 or 40 yards long and maybe 20, 25 yards wide. That is it, the closest thing to a park that we have in Westonapolis. And that's probably more of a long-term project because there's not a lot of open space over there, but we really need to work on it. The third item is continued support of business development in Westonapolis. It means jobs, it means more property tax revenue. It's, Westonapolis is very slowly coming around as a shopping area. Restaurants are doing well, we could use one or two more. Every single part of Annapolis that has experienced business redevelopment and a resurrection of the economy has been led by restaurants, whether it's the First Block of West Street, even City Dock from in the early '70s. What led the way? Fran O'Brien's, you know, Middleton's, McGarvey's, et cetera, et cetera. Eastport, Severn Avenue, same thing. I could go all over town, and it's restaurants that lead the way. The next six that I have are not in any particular order, but my, one priority would be law and order, simply put, especially limiting violent crime in low-income areas. I mean, that is the most glaringly obvious problem, I think, that we have. But it's law enforcement and community involvement in general we need to work on. And we, you know, people are calling to defund the police and that sort of thing. Very bad word to use, "defund," when it comes to this sort of thing. But we do need to look at maybe pulling back in some areas and funding non-traditional areas to improve community relations and to bring crime down. Community policing and patrols. Sometimes simply patrols are every bit as important as getting out of the car and working with the community, at least where I am. I get complaints all the time in the Clay Street area that, you know, once a night in the night shift, they'll see a car coming through, police car coming through, and that's it. Not a high-crime area, I'm happy to say. Crime has been reduced in that area. It's been led by the housing redevelopment, and a lot of people own their own houses in that area, and there's a real pride of ownership there, and it's showing through. It's not to say there aren't crime problems, there are, particularly drug sales. But both community policing and community patrolling are important. When it comes to the budget, I'd like to see return to zero budgeting, where every department starts with nothing and justifies literally every penny that they want from us. We successfully did the budget that way for a number of years. I mean, I could report to a constituent the cost of a particular project that a department is doing, instead of just getting the general numbers, which is much more like what we get today. It's a little more work, but I think it's definitely doable in terms of tracking department spending and the requests that departments are making. I think one thing that we were reminded of in the past week or so by the former county finance director, and that is studying possible merger of certain services with Anorundal County, not saying across the board. It may turn out that it's not feasible, it may turn out that it's more expensive, I don't know. But I think we definitely need to make a serious effort at looking into that and seeing what the cost would be. Do we need to split the police department, like Rockville, Bowie, Gaithersburg, and they've done it very successfully, where locally, they handle the uniformed police type of duties. But when it comes to investigating the serious crime, the CID, the Criminal Investigation Division, that goes to the county. Now, I don't know what the revenue split is, how that works, frankly. I can only tell you what I see and what I know about based on my experience in the state's attorney's office. I think there is money to be saved, but I don't know that without looking at it. And that's just, I'm not picking on the police, it's just something that quickly comes to my mind as an example. Number eight, I think environmental responsibility is definitely a priority. Listen, I don't have as many marinas or docks or anything like that in my ward, but I've probably got as much or more waterfront than anybody, both College Creek and Weems Creek. They're both in my ward. They may be entirely in my ward, I'm not sure. And the runoff and things like that, Weems Creek, we've made some real strides in, but, you know, we need to keep up the good work, and it's a beautiful creek. And not that many people know about it. It's okay by me, but the fact of the matter is, we have a certain responsibility, and I'm not sure we've been meeting it as well as I think we should. And lastly, again, let me remind you, this isn't in any particular order that I'm going with these, is workforce housing, which is a combination of a Ward 2 issue and citywide, definitely citywide. I think workforce housing speaks for itself. We all know in general what it is. It's not necessarily low-income housing, but it's low-to-middle income housing, I suppose, teachers, police officers, firefighters, and others, many others, some of which would be, I think, classified as low-income, but that's okay. Those are the nine things that I have as budget priorities.
Thank you, Alderman Peown. Lunch is ready. Did anyone have some questions for Alderman Peown?
Boy, that must have been a good one.
You nailed it.
Either that or nobody was listening, so.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn for lunch then, if there's no questions? So, Dave?
I would suggest just a 30-minute break, so if we could all be back. It's about 20 after, so about 10 minutes till 1:00. We all come back and take up the meeting again.
10 minutes till 1:00, it's half an hour.
10 minutes till, what's that? I said 10 minutes till 1:00.
10 minutes.
Yeah, 30 minutes from now.
So we can take our lunches to different places, so you can go watch some pickleball if you want, but as long as we're back at 10. And Lynn?
I just wanted to say that the lunches are downstairs in the hallway, and they're all boxed lunches or salads, and you'll see them clearly labeled. But there is a mixture of things for all kinds of different dietary restrictions.
And you can take your mask off to eat your lunch.
Fair.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Everybody is here. Okay. Dave, you got that set up? Yep. Okay, everyone, first point of business today. It is the man that has led us, done an amazing job, is leading us through the pandemic with the emergency management team. Guess whose birthday it is? On the count of three, happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
How was that? So I knew you guys knew it was my birthday, but how did you know on my birthday what I wanted it? The H-10. You don't look at the age of the senator. Oh. Trying to catch up to the future.
Lieutenant, how do you know what the favorite flavor cupcake was?
Oh, thank you.
There's coconut and red velvet and there's, so there's chocolate and there's more down here.
Boys.
Yeah.
Does anybody want a cupcake? Thank you, everybody. Carry on. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, so we won't go to the city attorney, but it is Rhonda who is up next. Are we good to go?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Okay.
For the three people who are watching at home.
You can tell how many people watch.
No, guessing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, budget and community priorities fiscal year 22. First, as the council's public safety standing committee chair, my budget and community priorities are with our public safety team, namely our Annapolis Police Department, Annapolis Fire Department, and Office of Emergency Management. We anticipate that is going to be a tight budget year, so my priority is full funding at the current level for these three vital departments. All three of our public safety departments have tangibly and visibly shown how essential they are, especially during these past seven months of the pandemic and even prior to the pandemic, and therefore cutting their budgets would be extremely risky at best. Additionally, our stellar public safety team has and continues to implement and enhance programs that value community policing and human service, human services and resources. Second, as the older woman representing Ward Three, the community priorities that have been presented to me are increased police patrolling and parallel response times, installation of sidewalks in many neighborhoods per the city's schedule, resurfacing of and repairing of neighborhood streets per the city's schedule, enforcement of parking laws, especially on residential streets, improvements amenities and sustained maintenance of the Reverend John T. Chambers Senior Park, including increasing the security within and around the area, continuing to ensure easy access for emergency vehicles throughout the streets of the community, increased police investigation of suspicious criminal activity, continuing support of balanced and managed growth and development, and increased enhancements that improve our quality of life. Also, the completion of our city's new Department of Public Works state-of-the-art campus in Ward Three, including the sensitive receipt of and respect for any Civil War archaeological artifacts that may be found, the completion of our 42 workforce market rate townhomes at town courts in Ward Three, and the continued implementation of economic and business recovery and sustainability efforts and programs in support of our approximately 750 businesses in Ward Three. And third, by law, the Public Safety Committee shall consider matters affecting public safety in the city. Therefore, first and foremost, the public's safety is paramount. Moreover, as this legal obligation relates to our community's residents, businesses, and visitors, the public's safety is best assured when its residents are, one, healthy, two, informed, in other words, educated, three, meaningfully engaged in the enhancement of our professional and volunteer workforce, four, good money managers of their finances, five, residing in safe and affordable housing communities, six, mobile, in other words, easily able to access adequate and affordable transportation where needed, and seven, pursuing social, community, entertainment, the arts, historical, and recreational activities, eight, as well as possibly choosing to enlighten themselves spiritually. Therefore, as Chair of our council's Public Safety Standing Committee, I am committed to working toward One Annapolis, an Annapolis that values everyone and where healthy living starts here. And healthy living starts here has been the theme and slogan of our Recreation and Parks Department for over 10 years, where along with our mayor's office, many of our One Annapolis programming is housed and implemented, hence full funding for our Annapolis Recreation and Parks Department. Thus, as we continue to promote this administration's mantra of One Annapolis, especially as it directly aligns with ensuring public safety, my budget priorities center around our community and those services and areas of concentration that are offered to our residents, businesses, and visitors that will assist them in pursuing an improved quality of life, just to name a few. Office of Community Services, Mobile Wellness Vehicle, the Take Care Annapolis Programs, Pop-Up Camps, Strengthening Families Program, Food and Nutrition Assistance and Services, Increased Youth, Family, and Community Empowerment Initiatives, including mental health, depression, and trauma, especially during these unprecedented times of uncertainty, stress, and anxiety for many, enhancement and implementation of programs that assist those residents who are suffering from substance use disorder, health, wellness, and environmental education, literacy, from a holistic standpoint, including a much deeper understanding of significant historically events and markers in life, providing pathways to securing a variety of workforce, entrepreneurial, career, and second chance opportunities, including skilled and vocational trades in many industries such as maritime, and as a companion, financial well-being services and support, increased assistance and public awareness of the dangers of COVID-19, citywide continued implementation of economic and business recovery and sustainability efforts and programs in support of our businesses, increased arts and entertainment initiatives that promote history, self-worth, and tourism, environmental resiliency and sustainability programs, improved transportation, infrastructure, and services, working with our local partners, including our school system, Health Department, and counties, state, and federal governments, as well as private and nonprofit entities, including actively pursuing grant opportunities, the pursuit of any and all creative and innovative opportunities that enhance the quality of life for all of our residents and businesses, and continuing an extremely aggressive campaign for all of our residents to complete their Sensus 2020 forms by October 31st. Again, these initiatives and programs are the best ways to ensure public safety here in our city. This is One Annapolis. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you, Alderman Pindel Charles. We will move along because there's quite a few presentations coming up after this as well, so Alderman Pindel, listen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief. You have a copy of my priorities up on the screen, but I also emailed them to you. I have divided them into ward-specific and city-wide. Four items under ward-specific, Ward Four, community policing. We know that the police chief is working in that direction. I would like to see a dedicated officer in each ward. I had a community meeting just two nights ago, and actually, let me take you back to last Saturday, I walked the community with one of our officers, he handed out business cards and introduced himself to the community, which is a first step in developing that positive relationship between the police and the residents. So that is a step in moving closer to actual community policing. My second priority, and these are not in any specific order, but I would like to see a water amenity in Ward Four. My residents have to go out of their community someplace else to enjoy any type of amenity, really. So I say a water amenity, a splash pad or something similar that would give our young people something to do during the summer months, at least. Third is an increase in refuse pickup. Many of you remember when we changed it to twice a week. I heard on Thursday night during my community meeting how unhappy residents are with the once-a-week pickup, because our communities have changed and the number of people who live in our communities have changed, the number of people who live in individual residences have changed. And so now the quantity of refuse that is picked up by our company is huge. And I know I've noticed, and I suspect most of you have noticed, that they come later and later in the day because they've got so much to pick up. At my meeting, I had John Manassa there to talk about what residents have to do, you know, keeping their refus in cans that have lids on them and that kind of thing. But we need to come up with a plan on how we address this great increase of refuse. My fourth item is to improve and/or increase monitoring of long-term rentals. In my ward, we have a lot of people who are purchasing homes and using them as rental properties, and those rental properties are not as well-maintained as they would be if they were owner-occupied. And so that is a growing problem in Ward Four that we've got to come, and I suspect in other communities also, that we need to address. My citywide priorities, one is community policing again. I think having a policeman dedicated to every ward would be beneficial to every ward. The second is a commitment to and a serious effort to create workforce housing. And I know Alderman Gay has his task force working. I would like to see us working with developers to encourage them not to put up any more high-end housing. Annapolis has a glut of high-end housing and almost no workforce housing. And when we talk about workforce housing, it's not low-income housing. It's housing for teachers and firefighters and police officers and nurses and the like, the average citizen. We are doing nothing to encourage our developers to build the kind of housing that we need in the city, and I think that should be a conscious objective on our part. The third item is the creation of, and I think we're on that path already, but an increase in the services provided by the Office of Community Services. And in that office, we're talking about training opportunities, we're talking about job opportunities, we're talking about health-related issues, we're talking about homeownership opportunities and financial management and understanding. We are talking in this department about services that will lift up our residents, those who are in public housing, we want to lift them up so they can afford to buy a house in the city of Annapolis. But we've got to give them a support system so that that is doable. And the Office of Community Services is our one-stop shopping location to provide some of these services. We've never had these services before. And in doing this, the police department should see a difference in what they're doing, because the folks that we're because the folks that we're going to try to serve in this department, if they get no service, they may very well end up getting service from the police department. So this will speak to, and the chief speaks to it frequently, the social issues that lead to his getting involved with particularly some of our young people. The fourth item is the improvement and expansion of the regional transportation system. If folks can't get to a job, they can't work in a job, and if they can't work in a job, they can't make any money to support themselves, okay? So we've got to think seriously about whether we want to help folks, again, be lifted up and get to the job opportunities that are out there. The next item is to bring awareness to and advertise the value of all areas of our city. You know, when people think about Annapolis, they think about downtown. Well, Forest Drive has an awful lot to offer. Most people have no clue what's on Forest Drive. I mean, the number of businesses that are there that really are getting ignored should be advertised. You know, I'm working on a map right now, and I've mentioned it to several of the Aldermen. There's five of us that share Forest Drive. We need to help those businesses stay alive. And one of the ways of doing that is to let people know that they're there and what they can provide. So that's the, all areas are of value. The next item is to treat all employees as if they have an important role in the city, and they do. Morale is getting better, but it still needs work. All of our employees should feel as if they're important, no matter what position, no matter what the salary. We want everybody to feel like they belong, because when people feel like they belong, they'll give you two-hundred percent of themselves. So, the next item, utilize a community survey to determine the priority of the residents. We saw the article in the newspaper about our deficit. We know that there's going to be a letter, if it's not already published, about us handing all of our services over to the county. Well, we need to decide where we go and how we fund our services. The community needs to weigh in, and I've asked for this a number of times. We need a community-wide survey to ask the residents what they value, what services are important to them. If they are not dedicated to the police and they think police should be a county function, then we should look seriously at that, okay? If they say they want fire as a city function, then along with that comes what it costs and how we pay for it. But we have to hear from the citizens. We all represent them, but we know that everybody out there has a voice, and some much louder than others. But we have to hear all of the voices, or as many as we can reach, so that we can make some sound decisions. And the last item is to investigate the advantages and disadvantages of merging city services with Anarona County. And that's relating to the previous one. But, you know, we talk about, and this letter is going to talk about, us turning our services over to the county. Well, the county's not going to just take them and it's going to be free. So we need to seriously investigate what that means. What's it going to cost? And what's it not only going to cost in dollars and cents, but what is it going to cost in response to our response times to our residents? How will it impact our citizens? So, those are my ward-specific and city-wide priorities in no specific order. But, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Turney has a question?
Yeah, just very quickly, I want to reiterate, at the business leadership meeting yesterday, oh, I can't place your name, from SOFO, there are more businesses on Forest Drive than there are downtown, and I did not know that. I mean, that is, that is a big deal. And then the only second thing I want, somebody said this to me, so I won't take credit for it, is that with this discussion about merging with the county, there seems to be this assumption that they'll take us. And I thought about that, it's like, you know, maybe they don't want to take the lower bunk, you know, like, do you know what I'm saying? So, we just have to be careful about that assumption, that blanket assumption before, I thought about that in the Hammond letter, it's like he's making the assumption that this is, they're willing and able to share services with us, and I think you just have to make sure that they're receptive to it.
And that's part of the investigation. We have to talk to the county to see if they're even willing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Finlayson. Alderman Schannelmeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and colleagues on the council. Really excited to be presenting this to you guys as your newest member. So, in no particular order, my services, my priorities for this year and this upcoming fiscal year are going to be, we need to make sure that we provide adequate assistance for our restaurant industry in the city. We are very dependent on food service as an industry here, and that is probably the biggest hit that COVID has done. I myself was laid off from food service at the beginning of the pandemic. I have several colleagues who still have not fully recovered. And providing a way for them to be flexible and expand out towards dining will keep their financial health healthy, along with their workers and their guests. We also need to ensure that there is money provided for the city's language access plan. I represent a very diverse ward. English as a second language is very common for a lot of my residents, and I need to make sure that they are taken care of in that way and have equal access to the city's services with extra language provided, I apologize. We need to ensure that public housing is safe and healthy. I have no public housing in my ward, but I know a lot of my colleagues do, and we need to ensure that that is safe and habitable, that mold is not a problem for people who live there. Honestly, I think that should be one of our biggest priorities overall as a goal. We have a responsibility to our residents that way. Ensuring adequate public transit, that will be essential for any of these expansions that we do, especially if we expand out sidewalk cafes at the expense of parking. We need a new way for people to actually get in, and adequate public transit's going to be a key part of that. I also want to commit to our public employees that we sign the contract with that we'll provide that three percent cost of living adjustment. Affordable housing, workforce housing, I'm glad to hear my colleagues make that a priority as well. I am very excited to look, working with you on all of that. And this is when we get into a little more abstract restructuring of things. We're seeing the problem in our current budget by how dependent we are on tourism and how dependent we are on special events. I think a good way for us to do that is to start adjusting how we build our economy. And for me, a big portion of that is building a municipal broadband network, one where we lay our lines, we operate our lines to provide competition at a lower cost, more reliable, and faster rate of service than Comcast and Verizon. It has been done successfully in other cities, mostly in Chattanooga, Tennessee is the best example, where they have built a very strong tech sector and taken advantage of their brain economy. With our proximity to Fort Meade, Washington DC, and Baltimore, we have the ability to take advantage of that educated workforce and provide high-speed internet for our workers and our residents. It also is an education leveller. Most teachers assume that their students are middle-class and have access to internet at home. This pandemic spotlighted the blatant falsity of that statement. And while our current deal with Comcast is a great short-term solution, that is a short-term solution, and building our own network line will even that out. And then finally, when it comes to police, we're going to be, I want to borrow from what another city has done for their, their police issues that worked in the past. Boston, Massachusetts, had during the early nineties, a spike in youth violence and homicide. We are seeing in our city a current down, seeing that spike as well, and we recently declared youth violence a public health pandemic. How Boston tackled that very effectively was the creation of their program called Operation Ceasefire. Operation Ceasefire took police funding and hired counselors to go out and talk to students and young people that were more likely to get involved in youth violence, and give them a healthy outlet to express themselves. Talk with, how's school life going? How's your family life going? How's your social life going? Give people a way to talk and not pick up a gun or pick up a knife. And youth violence in Boston plummeted. I think with our highlighting this as a priority, we can actually implement this program pretty successfully, and it is definitely worth looking into. With all of our talk of community policing, we need to keep in mind that we cannot occupy our neighborhoods into pacification. We need to actually provide a way to encourage people to not get involved in violence and crime to begin with.
Thank you, Alderman Schannelmeyer. Alderman Gay?
Thanks. You know, I agree with the Operation Ceasefire. We have a program, that Monday, I'll be asking the council for funding for, in form of a resolution, just so that it could be on paper, but I'll be asking the council for funding for that out of our COVID funding. As we talked about, so much of the crime can be contributed to that, and it's been a talking point of both our city managers and our mayors, how COVID has contributed to our crime increases. So I hope to use at least seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of the one-point-two-million dollars or one-point-four-million dollars that we've had remaining to help combat that in a detailed plan that I will present to the council this Monday. So I will, I definitely support that, and I'd hope that we can talk and you consider supporting the legislation this Monday. So I'll just jump into my priorities. None in order, just based off of kind of what was going through my mind. As mentioned earlier, I'd like to look into doubling the city property tax on vacant properties. Adding an additional two percent property tax for, and the language in this is not yet fixed, but something that I will look into changing based off of definitions. Adding an additional two percent property tax for second homes, six percent for third homes, ten percent for fourth homes, increasing four percent per additional home. That speaks to some of the issues that all of us have expressed as in our wards, if homes have been purchased and used for short-term rental or for, well, yeah, short-term rental and there'd be the same difference, but that is to help with that. A two-dollar-and-fifty-cent fee per night on short-term rentals in the city of Annapolis. This fee will be collected and saved in the Housing Affordability Trust Fund. I was talking with a few of our colleagues during the break, and the city of New Orleans implemented this in their short-term housing legislation, and in the first year, they cleared two-million dollars in fees collected. A development tax of three-point-five percent for the first one-million dollars of property and land, two percent for the next four-million dollars' worth of, and point-five percent for additional one-million-dollar in development for non-affordable housing projects. This would go for what we see in Eastport, where you're able to buy a yacht center and build million-dollar homes without contributing into the community. Traffic, this is now in the traffic category. Ten-dollar-per-month space fee on privately-owned or government-owned parking garages in city limits that do not contribute to revenue currently. So that would be hopefully looking at something where we would charge ten dollars per space per month for Whitmore Garage, for any privately-owned parking facilities within the city limits. Additionally, I'll come back to this one, because this is my big, big acts, but that's also involved in traffic. I'll move on to environmental concerns. A pollution tax of five-hundred dollars per ton of nitrogen or sediment runoff into the Chesapeake Bay by city, I'm sorry, by businesses, and an additional twenty-five dollars per extra ton produced of runoff. Again, and this is just a look at some of the projects that have been developed over the course of the last year, and so many emails and concerns we've got from our constituents, and how those facilities have been managed and kind of been let off the hook a little bit, so that's to help out with that. Also, a huge concern of mine is renewable retrofitting of city property. I think it would help significantly in us reducing costs as it relates to energy and gas and just all of those things that we have said for years that we would fix, but we haven't, and that includes ceasing all purchases on vehicles that are not electric. Additional, and then I'll get back into my big acts, requiring Annapolis City lobbying license to lobby in the State House and charging one-hundred dollars per legislative session worked. This is a way for us to create just a different, additional revenue, and it is, it has been done, I looked it up. Another additional and hopeful, a medical marijuana tax of five percent of sale value per half ounce or less, oh my God, my computer just died in the middle of me reading. Hold on, I have it on my phone. Yeah, may, let me, oh, hold on, wait, I got it right here, actually. Medical marijuana tax of two-point-five percent of value per ounce from cultivators, five percent of sales per, of value per half ounce of less of quantity sold, seven-point-five percent of sale value per half ounce to one ounce quantity sold, and ten percent of sale value for amounts over an ounce sold. And obviously, we'd have to partner or tackle this issue with the county, but I think that with the increase and the popularity of medical marijuana use within our city and our county, and one sitting right on West Street, collecting all of that money and us not even getting a snippet of it is frustrating, and I think that that is something that can be done. They can contribute in some way, shape, or form to this city's economy. And then lastly, which I mentioned is my big acts as it relates to transportation. This bill would, this project is expected to cost anywhere in the ballpark of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to a million dollars. This bill will outlaw the use of operation, will outlaw the use of operation or of ride-share services using independent contracting within three miles of the city of Annapolis limits. And so basically, right off the gate, that bill would ban ride-share services such as Uber and Lyft. Just stay, stay with me, and you'll understand why. Hold on, I lost my place because I'm reading on my phone, okay. For the express purposes of providing on-demand transportation services to any location within city limits, this program will also serve Ottington Mark Station in the Anarona County to Community College, bringing passengers both to and from these stops on demand. This program is intended to work in tandem with existing transportation systems. The services will be on-demand and operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week to services, service anyone within city of Annapolis limits, resident or not. Passengers can call a city phone number or, using your mobile device, schedule a trip. Upon implementation, transit operators will use their personal vehicles under a city group insurance policy. These transit operators will be converted to electric-slower operated vehicles once the program has repaid the city's transportation debt and revenue margins expand. The ride-share will operate with seventy percent of program net revenue going into the transit operators and the remainder, remainder serving to lower the transportation debt of the city of Annapolis. The transit operators will have the express right to unionize the services with employees, international union. This is all very, very similar to, if you look up Ride Share Austin, a policy that Austin, Texas, put into place. So basically, what would happen is that the city would create its own ride-share program and all of the, of course, we would have to pick up the expenses, but eventually, once the program is successful, the revenue brought in through the ride-sharing services outweighs the expense, and we modernize our transportation in the city of Annapolis and get far ahead of what many cities are doing now. And that was something that we all mentioned, is how important transportation is. And I think with our existing system and the, and the issues that we've highlighted and understand that we now need to make changes in getting people directly to jobs, getting people directly to resources, that is a twenty-first-century transportation plan. So, that's my legislative priorities for the budget session.
Alderman Schannelmeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Gay, would the, I'll just call it Ride Share Annapolis, would that take the place of traditional, traditional public transit as well, or would it be in addition to?
No, it would be in addition to.
Thank you.
Alderman Turney, then Alderman Finlayson.
Very quickly, Alderman Gay made me think of this, and I just asked that you put it as on a to-do list regarding the budget. With the flux, I know, with the flux going on with the Visitors Bureau, this might be an opportunity to reevaluate the structure of the hotel tax and where it goes, that possibly with the state, we can renegotiate the seventeen and the three percent so that it doesn't go to, you know, all to the Visitors Bureau, that it comes back to the city. I think that would be a discussion to have with Sarah Elfrith, but it's, I think it's definitely worth investigating, because what goes to the Visitors Bureau usually services county, you know, hotels and casinos and stuff. That money, I always felt should come back to us, at least more than money, I always felt should come back to us at least more than what it, what it does right now. And this is a good opportunity to readdress it. I know Senator Astle is probably...
If I could, I just, because my computer died, I didn't get the finished reading, but I now have my, to continue on the marijuana policy, quickly. The legislation will ban the practice of detaining, well, that's outside of it, but I'll still read it. The legislation will ban the practice of detaining citizens for the public consumption of purchased possession of amounts less than one pound of cannabis-infusion products. This includes brownies, cookies, THC oils, et cetera, et cetera. Implement a city tax of 1.5% for every one pound of cannabis, that's $100 worth of cannabis-infused products sold by in-city cannabis vendors. The tax will increase to 2.5% for over $10,000 worth of sales, 3% for over $25,000, and 5% for over $100,000. That was the confusion I made in the initial because I was just trying to read off of my head. Implement a 1.5% tax for every one pound of cannabis or $100 worth of cannabis products stored or produced within the city of Annapolis. The tax will increase to 2.5% for over 10 pounds or $10,000 worth of cannabis-infused products, 3% for over 25 pounds of cannabis, $25,000 worth of cannabis-infused products, and 5%, et cetera. Permanently, permanently ban synthetic cannabinoids, K2/spice, from the city of Annapolis, which is also popularly sold at gas station locations. Within this legislation, the product CBD will be taxed and regulated within same standards as cannabis and THC. CBD is also, you all know what CBD is, but it's popular and it's now sold in any location. I mean, you can buy CBD at the gas station, really. So just looking at ways to additionally tax these products. The funds generated by this tax will be earmarked solely for direct spot for mental health, emergencies, training, and de-escalation, psychiatrics, as sociologists to serve as an alternative to police response, road improvements within the areas. The city rated as having the lowest 10% quality of roads, tree coverage, conservation and expansion projects, and fair free transit connectivity designed for the maximum freedom of travel for Annapolis residents and low-income communities.
Alderman Pendel Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Gay, you started by indicating that you will be submitting a piece of legislation on Monday. Does that have anything to do with the meeting on yesterday?
From our public safety meeting?
Yes, sir.
It does. And so base, well, oh, no, not that meeting that we had yesterday.
Okay, that's, that's all I, I was just wondering. Okay.
From last week, a couple, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So this would be a day before?
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Alderman Gay for thinking out of the box. That's one of the things you bring to the council. Unfortunately, I predict that the city attorney will disabuse you of any notions that we have, any of the taxing authorities that you have brought up. We can certainly lobby the state for some of these things, but we have no taxing authority other than property tax. So maybe you have a plan for this.
Well, I think that that is the plan, is that, you know, lean on our partners in the county, but also rely on the state delegates. I mean, our state delegates and state senator, that's their job. That's why they were elected, to bring resources and finance and revenue back to this district. So, you know, we have to think outside of the box. That's the reason we're in this situation, because we, the only revenue we can come up with is property tax. And so I think that, you know, looking at what, you know, trends are, what's happening across the country, we have to get on board or we'll get left behind. And it's interestingly enough, I was talking, having a conversation with a friend last night, and this, as it relates to my ward, and they were just saying like, it's so hard to get anywhere, get out in this city, and it feels like it's by design. And these are the words that we're having in a group conversation about five of us, but just, you know, they took all of our houses from us, put us in public housing, gave us no resources, no education, no city recreation, no nothing for decades. And we are in desperate, desperate times in our communities, and people feel hopeless. They don't feel that the businesses in this city are designed or catered to them. They don't feel anything. And so we have to start producing revenue to meet those needs and to make sure that in five years, our minority population does not die out because they can't afford to live here, or because they just don't find anything of value or interest in this city. And that's my fear, and that's why I think we have to start really just looking outside of the box and looking at what we can bring in. So I'm open to having all discussion with the city attorneys, state delegates, state senators, county executive, whomever.
Russ, are you still? Alderman Arnett, are you still, are you good? Yeah. Alderman Pendel Charles. And remember, we've got a few more presentations after this as well, everyone.
Thank you, thank you. Alderman Gay, I definitely agree with you on the fact of the state of our public housing. I mean, I know the history, and that's troubling. And so I'm speaking just as a personal person, not as an older woman, but I saw what happened. And, and you are certainly right when people were displaced and how that all came about. And people really know, they need to know the history of how we got where we are. But that's all I'm going to say for this. But thank you for, for reminding us.
Thank you, Alderman Gay. I see that line in front of the dispensary on West Street, and I can't believe it. There's never not a line there.
Exactly. Imagine if we were getting at least $2 off every sale.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It sounds like Mr. Lyles is going to be busy. And thank you, Alderman Gay. Do you think maybe we should do, if we do something like this again, it might be helpful, I think, to focus more on just our legislative agenda, just to have an idea of what each other, what we're working on, so we don't have overlap and that kind of thing. That'd be, be interesting to hear. But I'm going to start off with... Oh, yeah, yeah, invite the state. Yeah, that's a good idea, too. Invite our state reps. So I'm going to start off with the budget needs for Ward 7. And, you know, I fully acknowledge this is a wish list, and with our financial straits, may not be possible, but in any case, these are some of the needs that have been, that I've identified over the years from speaking with my constituents. So first of all, we sidewalk expansion, similar to what I think Alderman Pendel Charles mentioned, is, or I'm sorry, Alderman Payon. But we could use a sidewalk expansion down Edgewood Road and then also Bay Ridge Avenue. There are gaps on both those roads where the sidewalk just stops, and especially with the crab boating facility going in down Edgewood Road, I think it'll be important. And then there's also some other proposed development down Edgewood Road that would impact that as well. So I don't know if we need to set up a fund to do that, to install new sidewalks, because I think we've been told before that the city doesn't really install new sidewalk. I don't know if that's something we could group in. I know the county groups that in with, with their paving operation. They'll put in new sidewalk, new curb. I don't know if we could do something similar. I think we could also look at putting in impact fees for development that'll help fund new sidewalks and expansion of infrastructure. The second thing is, again, Edgewood Road, but this time talking about transit. So currently, I have a lot of senior homes, homes for the elderly down Edgewood Road, and there's no transit for them. And even the folks, residential folks at the end of the road, you have to go drive all the way down Edgewood Road to the Giant, catch the bus, and then the bus, you can't even get right downtown. The bus takes you to the Eastport Shopping Center. As much as we love Eastport, sometimes we want to get downtown. But it kind of, I'd like to see the transit focused on downtown, where people can take one ride downtown without a transfer. But in any case, I think there's some options to look at for the transit down there. I know the director's aware of this need, desire of mine, and he was looking at putting up some kind of small shuttle to try. And I think one option instead of, to help the city pay for this, would be working with the senior centers that are down there to help have them pitch in money. I've spoken to some of them, and they are open to it. And maybe that could also double as an on-demand shuttle for the residents, the residents down there, where they could help chip in if they don't even live in one of the senior centers. The third thing, another Edgewood Road, is beautification of that road. It's going to be getting a lot more traffic now, and I think it'd be great to make sure that stays looking nice in terms of, there's a lot of overgrowth hanging over the edge of the roadway. Resiliency assessment for Ward 7, that's the fourth thing, but also citywide. But I'd like to know, you know, we've looked a lot at downtown and Eastport in terms of the impacts that we're going to see from sea level rise, but we don't really know, there are other wards that are going to be impacted. We have Ward 2, Alderman Payon, your ward has waterfront, he might be impacted. Granted, you have a lot of elevation there, but how is that going to impact Ward 7? Am I going to have areas that are impacted? We just don't know because we haven't had that citywide assessment done yet for resiliency. I'd like to know what we need to plan for, how much we need to spend in the future. The fifth thing would be bike paths connecting to Ward 7. We have some, some gaps, and it'd be nice to get that connectivity. And the last thing is, I guess, that's, I think that's it for the budget concerns, for the specific budget items. General budget concerns, you know, I already mentioned, went into my concern about the structural imbalance. So I won't go into that more, but I'll say, you know, my concern is kind of related to the one ordinance, O2720, which is coming up Monday, which again would, half of it deals with pension changes between, which are, you know, you can't argue with. But the other half of that ordinance deals with contract employees. And regardless of what you feel about if it's warranted or not, that would require all non-grant-funded contract employees to be, become civil servants after five years, or they'd be let go. That's going to have a fiscal impact and contribute to this deficit, this structural imbalance. And I think we need to be careful with that. But in terms of addressing the underlying structural imbalance, I do think, many people have mentioned kind of looking at, you know, possible cooperation with the county in various regards. And I think, you know, I'm not saying I'm committed to any of this, but I do think we need to see what our options are. Like, do we need to look at layoffs? Do we need to look at salary adjustments? Do we need to look at combining services with the county? Do we need to look at a tax increase or getting authority from the state to have a portion of the sales tax? Like, I mean, they grant this to Ocean City, one out of all the municipalities in Maryland. I don't think that's fair to the rest of us. I think we need it. We need to pay for all these things, to pay for resiliency and everything else. So I think we need to work with our state delegation to get that. But these are all options I feel like are on the table. Again, I don't know if I'll agree with all of them or any of them, but I think we need to see what our options are. And in terms of working more closely with the county, again, I'm cautious about that because we would lose some control, but, and autonomy, but I think we need to give it a realistic look at, especially, there's a lot of overlap between fire departments. Is there some other agreement we can get there? I think the police idea that Alderman Payon mentioned is intriguing and thing to look at. I think transit, there's some overlap in terms of, we provide transit to the county. Are they contributing? Do we want to look at smaller transit vehicles? And, let's see, we'll get into the community services department later if we have time, but, you know, I think it's definitely, we need community services, but I think we need to look at, we can't get around looking at the two departments that make up 50% of our expenses, expenditures, and that's police and fire. And so that's where I think we definitely need to see what our options are with that. I think I'll just stop there because my citywide priorities are really, I think people have already spoken to that. I share everything that people have said. I'll just speak again to the climate resiliency, which I think we need to get a better handle on. But with that, I do think, specific to the police department, I do think we need to look at possibly shifting some of that funding to the community services department to provide some of the mental health first responders and revisit if we need, how many uniformed officers do we need? You know, I'm hearing like with Eastport, a lot of these things, maybe targeted shootings, the police presence, would the police presence really help with that or not? I mean, I think I really need, before we even look at that, I think we really need to get a good analysis of what, where the police department thinks the crime is coming from, what we can do about it. We need to hear from them. But anyway, I do think we need to have that conversation sooner before the budget process really gets started. So anyway, I just do want to thank the mayor, city manager for putting this together. I think this is a great idea to get this started ahead of time, and so we can really be coming together to introduce this budget. So it's, it's not just the mayor's, it's, at that time, hopefully it's going to be more of a collective effort, and we can really get together on some of these tough decisions we need to make. And I really enjoyed hearing from everybody else in terms of your priorities. I've written them all down, so thank you all.
Okay, meeting adjourned. No, just joking, Russ. We are at quarter two, so just Alderman Pendel Charles?
Mr. Savage, did I not hear anything about the environment from you?
Well, I mentioned, I was focusing on resiliency and...
Okay.
But a lot of the priorities, but people have already mentioned water access and things like that. But I have a whole legislative list I'm not going to list out, but...
Alderman Gay?
Yeah, no, I just, I want to throw support to my colleague in mentioning that, and I said this earlier, when you look at these two departments that make up $21 million apiece, I mean, you can't help but want to dive into that and know what's going on, or want to know where some of the money is being spent, you know. I, and so I don't want people to think that it's picking on public safety because it's not. But when you look at these, the two largest departments in your city, and I, I mean, I don't have a single clue what they spend that on. I mean, we get these budget seats that just give us, you know, I don't even, this is not even an idea of, it just says, police department, $21,481, $400. Fire, $21,110, $850. I'm like, what is that on? We don't, I don't know how many staff the police department has. I don't know who's in the office, who's in the streets. So that, yeah, that all needs to be looked at. And it's not us attacking, it's just us trying to figure out how to operate city government. And secondly, to your point, God, you made a really, really good point about something else, and now I'm blanking on it. Yeah, it's this heat messing with my brain. I mean, can we get, budget requirement, AC for city hall?
Just one quick thing, Alderman Gay, I do believe Director Dickinson had explained why that is, the accounting procedures that they use. So just to clarify that, just want to make sure.
1:45, Alderman Payon?
Thank you. I think the zero budgeting that I, I talked about would take care of that exact problem. I've got the same issues. You know, I get constituents saying, well, who paid for, you know, this McGruff to come out to this neighborhood and, you know, do this, that, and the other thing? And I go back to my budget book, and I don't know.
That was the...
That's, that's exactly what I had in mind.
And just, that was a point that I was mentioning, when you were saying, using some of the police for community service and stuff like that. And when you look at like Minneapolis, Kentucky was one, or Louisville was one, when they reform, you are still using, like, so, and I sent this question to the city manager, and he said we'd have to do some research, but they are now counting like therapists and social workers as a uniformed officer, so that you are still meeting your mark, but, and also meeting the needs of the community, because often you don't need a guy toting a gun, you need somebody questioning this child to understand what's taking place in their home, or the adult to understand what is taking place over the course of their life. So there are so many avenues that we can take. I think that it will take to, it will take the full, like, all of us, from city manager, obviously starting with David because he's run, runs the thing, but, you know, just open mind, taking the blinders off and looking at like what, you know, what the world is going through to meet some of these concerns, because I think if we continue on the path, same path, as I said, we'd be failed. And also, whenever we have these meetings, whenever we have any meeting, a work session or whatever, please do not schedule stuff after it and rush, we rush through the meeting because it defeats the purpose of us meeting. We're meeting so that we can talk about budget and legislative ideas, and if that takes until 8 o'clock, it takes until 8 o'clock. You know, I think that we just don't spend enough time on this, and that's my frustration always in our work sessions, so.
Alderman Arnett?
First of all, I'd like to say amen to what Alderman Gay just said. It is our job to get into more detail and to understand... It is our job to get into more detail and to understand these, and to take care of our constituents by doing that. And I fervently hope that this is just the first of these kinds of budget discussions, but I totally agree, every one of these issues that we're bringing up today are important in their own right and really need us to devote our attention to them. So I, again, want to thank the mayor and the city manager and the finance director, certainly all of the members of the administration, two of whom are here with us, Lynn Pharoah and Katie Conley, and there's people in the other room and there's people throughout the city that have helped us put this together, and we really do thank you for that. I also want to note that I've already heard today, the level of discussion that far exceeds that level that we get a chance to get into when we're doing the actual budget deliberations in May and June. And again, that is the purpose for having this kind of early meeting. It's also the purpose for getting all of us together and be involved in this, rather than a cluster of three going off in a corner, doing a lot of hard work and productive work, but not doing it together. So I am really, really very happy that we're doing this. I will start off with the Ward Eight needs, which for me are in priority order, not random, but also I think are reflective of what I see as much of the core values or core services for the city. So my number one is stop the gunfire, public safety. We need to get more sworn officers. We have always been several officers down, and then when you add to that officers who are on disability, sick leave, maternity leave, court duty, military duty, we don't have the number of sworn officers that we as a council have appropriated, have said this is what we want. So having said that, I think we, once we get those officers or as we get them, and even with the ones we have now, we need to have a more effective use of it. And I've heard some of you talking about that today, more effective use of those officers. I think we are talking, Alderman Gay just mentioned, the kinds of people we think of, we don't think of now, but ought to be thinking about as sworn officers, or at least people who bring public safety to the city. The mayor and I and the city attorney and some of my constituents were just in a meeting where it was emphasized over and over, what we're doing now is not working, just not working, and we're going to have to redouble our efforts to make that work. I think that is a message that can be heard across the city, and certainly I've heard some of you touch on it this morning. Things I don't have on that list, but we found are expensive, they have a value, but funding for cameras, that's the maintenance of them, that's the monitoring of them, which is one of the most important things, which I'm not sure we get, that we did learn that storage of the film and redaction is hugely expensive, much more than we ever thought going into that. And then, again, coming out of this meeting we just had a couple of days ago, I think it's incumbent on all of us, the administration, but also the council members, to have regular reporting to the citizens. I was very surprised in our meeting how much, and I hate to admit this, my constituents didn't know about what's going on, including the fact that we have turned over keys to a couple of units in public housing, that we are installing devices in our BG&E lighting that allow people to hear, allow the law enforcement to hear where there are shots going on. I'd like to do better. I think we ought to be doing cameras, and that technology is already long in existence. But in any event, moving on, traffic, traffic sidewalks and parking, which are the next three, are what I hear the most about from my constituents. Speeding on the streets, access from the side streets, and on that point of things, simple things like cutting back shrubbery and vegetation at the corners to allow people to see, putting up mirrors to allow you to see things that are very hard when you're trying to come out of the side streets. Stop sign patterns. We've talked with Public Works about this over time. It does not make sense. Some, you'll have stop sign, stop sign, stop sign, no stop sign, stop sign, stop sign. And I think that we need to work more on rationalizing that. And in Eastport, we have a pattern of one-way streets, one of which makes sense to me, but the rest don't, including my own street, which is one-way, sorry. So there's a lot to talk about on traffic. And again, all of these things are things that cost more money or take more effort. The sidewalk repair, we've already heard from you, next slide, please. We need to repair them, keep them in good shape. We have a schedule for doing that. I don't think we have enough money invested in that, and that is just to maintain the existing sidewalks that we have. I've heard two people mention today at this meeting, two colleagues, there are places where we need more sidewalks, and we don't have any plans for that. We also need to get utility poles and city signs out of the middle of our sidewalks. That's particularly an issue for people with disabilities or wanting to take their children in a ramulator, or whatever the word is, down the sidewalk, and they have to scoot out into it. Street repairs, the next one, we have moved from a plan, a 30-year plan to a 20-year plan, or we've moved to a more frequent plan, but it's still something that comes up over and over again. Potholes, I think our Public Works does a good job responding to potholes writ large, but specifically when we report it, and that's an obligation of our constituents. If you have a problem with a pothole, report it. And I do think that we need to think about impact fees, shifting more of the costs for the repairs, because often those are because utility or contract work has been done where they dig into the street and they don't do a really great job of repairing. Two other items on that list are flooding. Alderman Savage just mentioned not looking at flooding in Ward Seven. We have looked at flooding in Ward Eight, but as far as I know, we don't have a plan to deal with flooding in Ward Eight. And so I think all of us, we need to have a more global assessment of what the jeopardy is that all of us face with sea level rise. Let's see, oh, yeah, another lesser issue is more community trash cans, where people can be dropping their stuff into a trash can at the corner rather than at the corner. So parking issues, parking is a citywide issue. It's particularly a Ward One and Ward Eight issue, but I think you all have experiences. I know Alderman Finlayson is having some of those issues in her very neighborhood and certainly in her ward. So we need to be looking at that, that kind of an issue. Shared parking is one of the ways to address the parking issues, and I know that planning and zoning is working on that. So parking continues to be one of the other day-to-day things that I hear about. Let's see, the last one that comes up all the time for me, I suspect in a different way for Ellie in Ward One, is the planning process. We're working very hard to get more citizen input into the planning process. The downside of that for developers is that takes more time, but I think that we really, the citizens have to live with the project. The project is built the last 50 years, the developer is here for two or three or four, the citizens are here for all 50 years. And so we really need to get more citizen focus in the planning process. We need to be Ward-specific, some of the wards are peninsulas, others aren't, and so we need to be thinking about that. After planning zoning is done and the project goes into place, there are some enforcement issues, and this again is something that requires more staff to follow up on the enforcement of the approved plans. So we go to all the trouble sorting something out, getting it approved, and then that's not necessarily what goes in place. Turning from those and recognizing that those are all likely areas to cause more increase on a day when we're told that in 22, fiscal '22, we are looking at some significant level of potential deficit unless we change things, I want to turn to the citywide budget issues as developed from my ward. Constant yield, thanks to a great deal of transparency by our finance director last year, is continuing to draw a lot of emphasis. David Gerald mentioned it briefly, or maybe it was Jody in their opening remarks about the constant yield versus constant rate. It was Director Dickinson, she said we're going to be using constant rate in these budget plans. I think that's right, but I think we need to be early on giving an explanation of why we're doing that, and certainly having a potential big deficit. But we need to recognize that the constant yield legislation is the state saying to us, we need to let our citizens know that we're not going to adhere to constant yield. And I think there's an abundant reason, a number of reasons why we don't do that, but we do need to tell our citizens why it is we don't do it. Next slide is the spending affordability. This is a big topic before the Financial Advisory Commission, and it is something that I hope we can get into more. The state does it, the county does it, and it really does, it is really very germane to this meeting today. Our revenue stream has got to cover our spending, otherwise we're in deficit spending situations. I have a couple of tables in this presentation that the finance committee brought to your attention for the last budget report, and they show some, for me, are ominous trends. Julian, if we can flip to the next two tables quickly, I think everybody's seen them, but I think, and Director, City Manager Gerald talked about them in his presentation, but if you look at our growth in revenues versus our growth in spending, it's not a healthy picture. If you look at our, pardon? Oh, all right, well, they'll come up next. I'll tell you what I'm going to say now. So we need to consider the trends that these tables are showing us, and the trends that Director Dickinson is showing us in the budget tables that she gave us today. The other thing that concerns me, I'm back on my old slide, Julian, is our, what for me feels like a heavy dependence on grants, and in fact, most of the deficit that we, I mean, a lot of more deficit would be experienced by us if we don't have those grants, and I think the thing that I want us to be wary of is, at the federal level, they are spending like crazy, and they're giving huge tax cuts to the wealthy. That can't continue. And my bet is that they're going to cut back on grants before they're going to restore the tax levels to the wealthy. So I think we really need to be concerned about the grants. Julian, if we can go to the table now, and I won't dwell on this, but it shows what to me is a concerning relationship over time between our revenues, either the general fund revenue or the total revenue, and our spending, again, for the general fund or the total revenues. And the next table, Julian, shows the revenues from taxes and employee compensation, which are roughly comparable in size in fiscal 2020, but are growing at very different rates. And that means that we're outspending our means. So moving on to the next slide, I'm trying to be mindful of the time here. We need to be discussing today, and we have started to do it in snippets, how do we cover the $3.3 million shortfall in fiscal '21? Is that the end of the shortfalls in fiscal '21, or will that be growing? At the finance committee, Director Dickinson told us that she thinks she's done a pretty good job of capturing all of the aspects, so the 3.3 may well be a fairly firm number, but it's still a negative number, and we've got to figure out how we're going to deal with that. And then, does that carry over into fiscal '22, and what are we going to do about that? And we saw the projection of a nine-and-a-half million dollar deficit for fiscal '22. Moving to the next slide, the Office of Community Services, we're going to be talking about later, that is going to require more funding. Now, I totally support that, certainly was one of the people that wanted to get that going, and I agree with Alderman Gay and Alderman Pindell Charles, and I think all of the rest of you, that is a change in the way we approach the crime situation, and that is a productive way of doing it, I think. But even more important, we've dropped it out of here, but I think that's a caring way of doing that. That is saying to people that are in a very adverse set of circumstances, we're not going to just turn our heads and not pay attention to you, or we're not going to just push that off to the county to take care of you, we're going to step up to the plate and we're going to try to take care of you. You are our citizens, you are our responsibility. But that, in my mind, is going to become much bigger than one social worker funded largely by grant money. I think that we'd be doing a huge disservice to our residents if we let them think that that is it, and we'd be doing a dishonor to our own pride or responsibility if we thought that one social worker is enough of the job. So, turning to the last, oop, second to last slide, I do think before us are, and we've heard this with John Hammond's letter, and we've heard several mentions of that today, we, the policymakers, and all nine policymakers for the city are here today, we really do need to be asking some fundamental questions of ourselves about what services the city should provide, and what services can we turn over to the county, albeit with the loss of autonomy. County isn't the only place that services can be turned over to, so I think we need to be exploring that. And that, by the way, was certainly part of what was recommended to us in the strategic plan document. We need to be looking for new sources of revenue, as Alderman Gay did, but we also need to be looking at what we can do to reduce the city's spending. And turning back to this issue that the Financial Advisory Commission is looking at, is funding, spending affordability, and some other issues that were brought up in Mr. Hammond's letter, which is somewhat of an unfair comparison. We are heavily dependent on property tax. The county does have other big sources of revenue. Property is still big for them, but they have other sources of revenue, and so we are kind of locked into where we can find the money. Property taxes, fees, fines, those sorts of things. This last slide was just sort of to remind us of what the services are we provide, I'm not even sure I got everything in there, and the charge that was given to us in the strategic plan to identify core services, which presumably are services that we will fund first, versus discretionary services that we would fund as we're able to, and then, again, an evaluation of revenue sources. I do have a list of things that we can talk about when we get to that point, about where we might look to reduce services, but I will, in my remarks with that, this slide here, hopefully bringing us back to the charge of looking at where we're spending our money and which are core and which we might not spend money. And I'll conclude with that, because it's already after two.
Thank you, Alderman Annette. Mr. City Manager, so I've got a 3:30 and I've got a 2:30, so what do you think the, and I can leave people here if you want to continue. So what do you think the, and I can leave people here if you want to continue. This was a big exercise to hear from the councilors on their priorities. So, what's the timeline, do you think, Mr. City Manager?
Well, we have three specific discussions that were next on the agenda. So we wanted to talk about the police department. We started that somewhat, but I think we should continue that to some degree. We started talking a little bit about the Office of Community Services as well, but that's a separate item, because I think we, especially that, we need to know what the will of the council is for staffing that. Right now, we have, we have applications from 10 social workers that we're considering, and one of them's going to be hired, and so we'll have that office started, at least. But there's different numbers of people that in that office that have been discussed, so I think that that is a worthwhile discussion as we build the budget. I think that's really important discussion. Maybe we could do that elsewhere, in a different form, but I think that this is, this is definitely the right groups, right, since we have the council. And then the last one is staffing for planning and zoning. They've got a lot on their plate now. They've had a lot added. Over the last few years, they have an increased funding. In fact, they were cut back in 2010 and never recovered from that. So there was some interest in discussing staffing and funding for planning and zoning as well. So those were the three issues, really focused issues, that we were hoping to get to today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just on that, the schedule, I don't know, but my colleagues, but it's now 2:00, going on 2:15 on a Saturday. I'm starting to lose focus, especially after hearing everybody. I don't know. I mean, I'll stay if everybody wants to, but we do have a work session next week. I don't know if we could, we could just make this into one of our regular weekly, I mean, monthly work sessions, or have a special work session to go over the rest of this. I don't know. Just throwing that out there.
What I think is, we've created an excellent platform here, right? This is, this is what we need to do more of. But I think that we could take one person to come in, Police Chief. I know that's going to take a while. So, we could bring the Police Chief in if you want to, or we could bring him up at another time. What do you think, David?
I think whatever the council chooses. We're here, we're going to stay here as late as we need to. It's all up to you all.
Alderman Turin, and then Alderman Pown?
He's speaking to us next week, right?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
I'm just bringing that up.
Yeah, the work session is on community policing, so that's kind of odd if we discuss, maybe we can address policing at the work session in unison with him and touch upon community policing. I don't know, but it's just weird that we're having a session on community policing and.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so he's going to be presenting what his vision is of the direction of police, right? That's his vision.
Yeah.
So what we're asking for here is for your ideas, for what you think the direction for the police should be. It's a lot different. Maybe what, you know, maybe what the chief is proposing is not necessarily, I mean, I think there's support for his overall direction of community policing, but, you know, what does that mean as far as number of police officers? What does that mean as far as converting police officer positions to more of the community service-type positions? I think we need, at some point, to hear that from the council.
I think we addressed a lot of how we wanted the police direction to go, at least generally here. So I don't think we need to add an addition with each of our individual priorities. So I personally don't think we need an additional portion today, but.
Good. I'm going to go down the line on this side, and order it, your hands came up. Alderman Pown was first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that my colleague, Alderman Savage, had it pretty much right. It is four hours of being here, I think, has caused, well, it's tough to keep one's focus. We can add a work session anytime, and I don't know that we have to change next week's away from community policing. While I'm not always a huge advocate of work sessions, we could do the following Thursday. I don't think we have anything scheduled, and continue this. I don't think that's anything to do. I think we ought to quit while we're ahead. It's been a productive meeting, and it hasn't gotten to the point where people are nodding off or are coming up with, you know, just talking for the sake of talking, which I may sound like I'm doing right now, but I don't tend to do that. I think, let's get out of here for today, and then set this in two weeks or three weeks, something like that.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we should not lose sight of one extremely important thing that I see. The integration, the direct integration of community policing through the police department, the Office of Community Services, as well as the One Annapolis programs that are mainly housed in the Annapolis Recreation and Parks Department. I think that's a total integration of where we're trying to get with this city. So I think that's something we should not lose sight of.
Alderman Finlayson?
I know that the hour is getting late, and we've been sitting here for a long time, and we're all tired. However, we have had our directors sitting in various places around this building since 10:00 this morning. I think since the chief is on the agenda, then we should at least hear from him. Okay? This goes to the morale issue that I mentioned. You know, let's support the staff that's here to do the work. We're tired, but we can handle it. It's only the right thing to do.
Mr. City Manager, if you, I mean, we should, can we take a vote on it?
Should we make a motion to adjourn?
Do we need to do that?
Is it a motion to adjourn, or a motion to stay?
Well, before we go forward with that motion, right, let's do a little more discussion here.
Yeah, I, oh.
I appreciate what you're saying, Alderman Finlayson, absolutely.
Yeah, I think we should have more respect for the agenda, and I agree with what Alderwoman Finlayson said. I am an empty nester. I don't have any kids at home. I really understand that. But basically, the Saturday is sort of shot, you know, I mean, as far as the day. And I think we should spend another, if it takes another hour to address the, you know, the agenda, and I look for your guidance on, David, on what do you, what do you need? I mean, what do you think for a successful day with what we need to cover?
There's two things. I think at some point in time, we need to have exactly the discussion that Alderwoman Pindell Charles said. And that's how all of this is going to fit together. How is police, community policing, the Office of Community Services, and the other departments, including Wreckham Parks, all going to meld together to provide these community services? So that's going to be a lengthy discussion. I mean, we're at 2:15 now, and that's going to be a lengthy discussion. So we, we don't want to rush that. So I guess my feeling is, we let all the other directors go. If we want to keep Director Trader and Chief Jackson here to have that discussion, we can do that. Or we can, we can reschedule that for a whole separate session to have that discussion. That, it's, we need to understand how that's all going to look in the budget. How big the Office of Community Service is going to be, how it's going to be related to police, what part Wreckham Park's going to have in that, and other departments. So that's a really meaningful discussion that we need to have, but not necessarily today.
I think that deserves its own meaning. So I think Alderman Pown, and then Alderman Gay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This kind of reminds me in some, at least vague respects, to when we're coming up on an important issue, and it's 12:15 in the morning. Most of us don't really want to decide important issues at, after we've been sitting for a long time. Now, we're not making any decisions that are going to bind us at this type of a meeting, but there are important messages to be had, and I, for one, want to make sure that I get them all. I just as soon do this, you know, on a Thursday afternoon, and, you know, a week or two. I don't, I don't see what the problem is. I'm sorry for the inconvenience that we didn't get to a couple of people, but that, that could happen at a, you know, one of our regular, regular Monday night meetings. I mean, it's unfortunate. I'm not trying to tell you that the department head's time isn't important, it is, but their message is important, too. It's probably more important, at least to me, and I want to make sure that I'm fresh and can really pick up on everything that they say. And I'm not sure that'll happen for all of us this afternoon.
Thank you. Alderman Gay?
I've always been in favor, and I've always said, "We don't meet enough." We, there's so many important issues come up in our city, and we spend an hour and a half in a work session. We say we'll come back to it. We never come back to it. You know, so I'm in favor of actually increasing the amount of times we meet a week, so that we actually can, you know, discuss the issues. So I will support that. And I mean, I, I don't know, I just, I don't know. For me, it was easy when they said, "You were elected. That mean, you had to attend meetings." I was like, "Oh, well, I'll have to cut out some fun stuff with my friends."
Thank you. Alderman Annett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand several points from this discussion. One, these are three important items, and they do deserve a proper amount of time. I am the oldest of all of you, and I get tired easily, so, you know, it's not going to hurt my feelings if we adjourn now. What will hurt my feelings is if we don't specifically schedule and quickly a time to reconvene. I think that's paramount. Otherwise, I'll stay here till Mass tomorrow. But I really hope that we can carry this on. I think we made a very good start. I also hope, and I'm directing this to City Manager Gerald, I heard a lot of good things from my colleagues today. I hope we have some plan to capture and at least summarize that information. I saw a lot of overlaps, which I'm pleased, exist, but not surprised, but pleased. So I think that that can also be the griss for the next time we adjourn, we get together on, or I'm thinking Fred, so adjourn, get together on these, this kind of a meeting. This, to me, is what we should have been doing as a council all along, and it really is where we get the work done. So I don't want to lose the momentum that we've established with this meeting. I don't, I do hope we capture the things that we heard from this meeting, and I really, really think that sooner rather than later, we need to reconvene. And hopefully, we can do it in a way that we don't abuse the time of our department directors. I feel sorry for them sitting over in another place, listening to us, when they're probably anxious to speak to us and hear from us about their views for their work, but also tell us what it is that we don't fully understand about the situations that they're facing. So that would, that would be my plea, is if we're adjourning now, let's please have a plan to get together again that is pretty definite, like within two weeks or something like that, be added to the amendment to adjourn, as an amendment to.
Can we tack on an extra hour on the work session next week? Is that feasible?
Not enough.
That'd be great. I'm out of town.
It's my anniversary. I can't do that. I can't. I'm kidding.
So, so, yeah, I think, let's, I think this body's in agreement that we can do a part two of today's meeting, right? So we will make sure that that is scheduled. We can expand if possible. Depends on the programming of the, of the, the city resources to expand the work session. Dave, can you look at that? And also, remember, we are, this is a trial of having an in-person city council meeting as well. So, you know, we're learning things from just doing what we've done today. And so, you know, how we stage people, how we lay out this room. Fred hasn't tripped over the wires. That's a good sign. So, so I think we probably don't need to vote on it, I think. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, and I think that the meeting, sorry, Dewan, I think the meeting on the 22nd is a great idea. And I guess I would suggest that we use the same format again, because I think that this was a lot more effective than us all sitting on Zoom and having this conversation. So what's the feelings about, you know, a meeting on the 22nd in person again? At the normal time for a work session, from 3:00 to 5:00?
15th and the 22nd?
Yeah, so we have one scheduled already on the 15th. That continues as a Zoom meeting, and then on the 22nd, to schedule one in person again.
It is the Business Recovery Plan. So it'll be Stephen Rice, and then Chief Jackson presenting on community policing. We could bump, we can bump that back a month. Yeah, so we, that's the other option. We could do it this, this week, Thursday, and just make it totally about community policing and, and Office of Community Services.
We don't have any guests coming from outside on that day?
Not that I know of.
Okay, that we have to change. Okay.
Yeah, not that I know of.
So, Dave, we could add some time onto that meeting and push, bump the Business Recovery presentation. Yep?
Or just bump it to next month, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Cool. Okay, so I'm going to just do some thank yous now. So first of all, we have to thank our Public Works Department for some really heavy lifting, and Lynn, for all the coordination. There seriously was a lot of heavy lifting to just even get this laid out for the first time today. And Julian, Mark, Brian, and Mitchell, all this setup, all the TV setups, running directors, and having everybody at hand has really been amazing. So I think we've done a great effort for this. And can we bring the directors in, just to say thank you for being here? Is three people allowed in the room? What's the, huh?
They're watching, so come on in.
Yeah. While they're coming in, Regina, Mark, and Julian, let's hear a big round of applause for those guys. For keeping us compliant with the Open Meetings Act, and especially Jody, Katie, and Director, I'm sorry, City Manager Dave Gerald. This is a great format, right? This, this is, you know, no one wants it to be the mayor's budget. You know, I'm a one vote out of nine. We want this to be a team effort. I don't want, you know, we don't want to be scrambling at the last minute, and I think this really is a good, good way to do things, right? So in the middle of COVID, we understand that, you know, we've had some massive, massive challenges to overcome, and we just want to get all our, so I think this is the format. We'll continue it. We'll be consistent. Let's get our city managers, our city directors in here, who gave up their Saturday to watch some gripping television. You guys were great. You nailed it.
Thank you.
We just want to say thank you. We're going to push the presentations to another day, but as you heard, but really, really thank you for all you've done. It's been a crazy year, and I think you guys have been exemplary. So thank you.
Chief, can I say a favor?
Now, Mr. Mayor, may I make the?
Okay, before we go to Alderman Pown for his closeout, anything else for good order while we're all together, and we're all looking each other in the eye?
Now, I'll make the proper motion to adjourn.
Okay. Can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.